I'd like to call or this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education for Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. Board members may attend and participate in meetings electronically or in person in accordance with BVSD policy, BMEA, and state law. Laura, can you please call or?
Chavez.
Here.
Medler.
Here.
Niznick.
Here.
Quinlan Awedah.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Unger.
Here.
Thank you.
We will now begin the work session portion of our meeting. Tonight, we have one work session item topic, which is the review of our academic calendar for 25, 26, 26, and 27. Dr. Anderson, would you like to do the introduction?
Thank you, Board President Raj Paul, members of the Board. It's that time again where we are going to begin the process to study and then ultimately approve our academic calendar for 25, 26, and 26, 27. Leading this process for the district is our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Robin Fernandez, and so she's prepared some short, brief slides to talk a little bit about the process, where we are. She's already collected a bunch of feedback as preliminary draft for us to review. And so with that, I will turn it over to Robin.
Good evening, President Raj Paul, members of the Board, and Dr. Anderson. I am very happy to be here with you this evening to share information with you about the academic calendar process. As Dr. Anderson said, this is referring to school years 25, 26, and 26, 27, which is hard to say without chugging because it just sounds so futuristic. And so I am going to describe both the timeline and the process for the development of the draft calendars that are before you this evening. So as a reminder, our draft calendars are created in alignment with Board Policy IC and IC-A. In addition, we also create our calendars in alignment with our BVEA negotiated agreement. And so those items that are pertinent to the calendar that are stipulated in the negotiated agreement include the school year, which is 172 days of student contact. In addition, there are four additional days set aside for exchange days for teachers, well, all staff that engage in parent-teacher conferences. In addition, there are 10 days that are set aside that are not school days for students, but days in which staff engage in work and professional learning. As always, items stipulated in the BVEA negotiated agreement regarding the calendar can change over time through contact negotiation processes. In addition, the holidays that you see on the right side of this slide are vacation days and are listed on the draft calendar as observed holidays. And based on board member feedback, other days, including Indigenous Peoples' Day, will be honored on an honorific calendar that will be printed on the other side of the academic calendar. So we will then be able to communicate the importance of these other days as well to our communities. So this slide depicts the set of collaboratively created guiding principles that are the final document that is used in the creation process of the academic calendars. And so these guiding principles are what you see here on this slide. They include providing a calendar that is the same for all levels, elementary, middle, K-8, and high school, limit the number of partial weeks whenever possible, and a partial week is defined as fewer than five days. The idea that we should coordinate our academic calendar with the University of Colorado Boulder and St. Rain School District. And I am very happy to say that we have engaged in quite extensive collaboration with both the U Boulder and St. Rain School District. So moving forward with the 25, 26 school year, we have agreed that all of our calendars will be in alignment for spring break, which is going to be great news to our staff and our, and our community. Further guiding principles include ending first semester prior to winter break, ending the school year prior to Memorial Day, and when possible, we avoid scheduling breaks that would conflict or be during the time that assessments would be given, including IB, AP, CMAS, et cetera. So during the two-year period of time between the academic calendar development processes, we do receive feedback from our staff and from our community that we are sometimes able to incorporate into future draft calendars. This year primarily, we have heard quite a bit of feedback about the desire for a fall break in October. We know that August to Thanksgiving can be a long stretch of time, and for that reason, other school districts in Colorado have added a fall break to their academic calendars. So in the draft calendar, you will see a two-day fall break is included in October in these drafts. So in order to accommodate that break, the, the calendar includes starting the school year one day earlier and moving one of the professional development days from first semester to second semester. In both 2020 and 2022, our families were queried about their preference to the start date and the end date for our academic calendar. And you will see that the data, it was consistent both in 2020 and 2022, that there is a strong preference in our community for our current calendar, meaning starting in the middle of August and ending prior to Memorial Day, as opposed to a later in August or September start with the end of the school year being into, well into June. And so at this point, we are considering that question asked and answered based on, based on this data. The timeline that you see on this slide that we follow for completion is a process that you may recognize from previous years. So what we do is we begin by taking our current academic calendars and overlaying them onto the dates for the years that we are processing. This year, as we know, being 25, 26, and 26, 27. And then the representative groups that are identified in that box on the top right-hand side of the slide are the groups that are given the opportunity to provide feedback and offer suggestions for revisions. So I will be meeting with each of these representative groups over the next two months to get information regarding suggestions for revisions. And then the calendar task force then reviews all the feedback and determines which input is in alignment with Board Policy IC and IC-A is in alignment with our BVEA negotiated agreement and our collaboratively created guiding principles and considers suggestions for revisions to the calendars. The group then discusses any ripple effects that changes could have positively or negatively that would affect students, families, or staff. The task force, whom I thank in advance for all of the work that they will engage in this spring, is composed of BVEA leadership, parent representative or representatives, principals, and district office leaders, including representatives from human resources and professional learning. And based on the feedback from staff and, and community, multiple proposed changes are often reflected in the final draft calendars that will come to you prior to November 1st, per Board Policy, for approval. And included in your board materials for this evening are the draft calendars for 25, 26, both in English and in Spanish. And so with that, I'm very happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Kitty, since you're remote, I wondered if you had any questions or comments you wanted to share with Robin first?
Um, yes, I do. Thanks. Thank you, Robin, and thank you to everybody who collaborated on this calendar. It sounds like we did a really good job of reaching out and getting, you know, the opinions of our stakeholders. So I know that long ago, when my kids were in school, spring break was always the last full week of March, and everybody knew that, and everybody could make plans. And I know recently, in recent years, we have moved it around, which has upset some parents. And I'm wondering with this for, not this academic year, but '24 and moving forward, and I guess I didn't compare the two calendars, but is it going to always be the, the third full week in March, or is, can we expect it to move around?
So that is a great question because predictability for our families and our community and our staff is really important. And so in our collaboration conversations with CU Boulder and with St. Rain, we have come to the conclusion that the feedback that we generally receive is favorable to the third week of March. And the other benefit for that is we know that when we return from spring break, the assessment season, if you will, begins, and that does provide us a little bit more breathing room in, in terms of being able to make sure that our students and our schools have time to adequately conduct CMAS and other assessments, and also make sure that our students who have been absent or sick have adequate time to, to make those assessments. So it gives us a little bit more of a time in order to be able to conduct that as well. So that is the intention of our collaboration with both St. Rain and with CU Boulder moving forward.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Helenia, I saw your hand up.
I noticed that one of our guiding principles is limiting the number of partial school weeks. I counted in the '24, '25 academic calendar 11 weeks that are not full. And I hear more about this in terms of attendance, working parents, when they're both two parents working outside the home. And if we're going to have that as a guiding principle, I would strongly recommend that we look at a way to bring some of those days together, where you could have a four-day weekend instead of a three-day weekend, or making them into a week, or something where people who have two people working outside the home can make a plan for a camp. I just get it, an incredible amount of feedback for people who are like every Friday or every Monday. And I went and counted the other weeks, and there were 23 other weeks. So a third of the weeks, we're not meeting our guiding principle there.
Yeah, that's a great question, and as a parent, that has been a struggle that I can certainly identify with. And you're right, over time, what we've tried to do is put together things like professional learning days together with a nationally observed holiday, so that we, instead of two, four-day weeks, we have two days together and a three-day week. And so we have tried to pair them, but nonetheless, we can certainly look at that as part of our feedback and see if there's anywhere where we are able to tighten that up. We know that our, our families have expressed to us about which days it works better for them, when school is out of session, but we can certainly look at seeing if there's anywhere else where we can provide fewer partial weeks. That's great feedback. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Beth, and then Jason?
It's okay. You kind of answered it. Thank you.
Jason.
Thanks, Robin, for all your work on this. I think I'm probably a lonely voice on this, but it seems like the, the driving force really is ending the semester before the winter break. That really seems to dictate almost everything. You know, if you, if you change that, you know, it opens up a lot of possibilities. And one thing I think about a lot is, and all our buildings are air-conditioned, but you know, when we go back to school, what is it, August 11th, you know, we have almost two months and increasingly more so of 90-plus degree days. And while that's fine inside, you know, you think about what that means for kids outside. And so I think, you know, while that's a nice thing to have is to end, end the semester and obviously align with the university, and there's some other things, and like I said, I'm sure I'm a lonely voice here, but it seems like as we're starting earlier and earlier in August with the goal of ending by the end of, you know, before winter break, there's a lot of other factors we're not considering, including the weather. You know, we get out in, you know, not quite the end of May. Here, it's May 22nd, and it still snows. And then we, you know, and then we get out, we come back to school, and there's, you know, more and more 90, 100-degree days, days of weather. So I would like at some point that to be some, something we consider as well, particularly as we are dealing with hotter summers. And I know, you know, when, when the, it seems like the, the top priority is ending before the winter break, that makes going back to school later in August or in September harder. But it seems like we should weigh some of those factors equally, like weather, getting out, you know. And I'd be curious, you know, I, just anecdotally, I don't know a single parent who loves going back to school on August 11th, and so I would be curious to know more about that data and the survey and really getting kind of a deeper dive into kind of what that means. Like I said, I don't, I'm not, this is a two-year calendar. I don't, I don't want to kind of throw the whole thing out, but I just think there's some things we really should be considering as well as, you know, what, what's, what are our guiding principles, and the weather is one of them, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. And you are right. We used to get a number of comments and complaints from community about the heat. Thanks to our board and our voters and the bond work that's been done in our schools, that has decreased dramatically due to the addition of air conditioning. But you are absolutely right that the driving factor, what I have learned in the three rounds of this now that I have facilitated this process, is that is exactly the driving factor of the entire calendar. And for people who have been in Boulder Valley School District for a very long time, you know that school did use to, that first semester ended after winter break, and the school year ended, you know, 8th, 9th, 10th of June. And a number of years ago now, the reason that changed is because we had some actually very tearful students and parents come to the Board to express a couple of things about how stressful in high school it is, first of all. Well, not, at that time, it was middle school and high school. It is to have the semester not have yet ended and to need to be doing studying and perhaps makeup work and preparing for finals during that winter break time. The other comment that we heard pretty clearly from the community was that students who are preparing for college entrance wanted to spend that two-week period really preparing their applications and getting ready, knowing that as soon as winter break was over and teachers had just a couple of workday, or a workday immediately following winter break in order to finish grades and have them be posted to students' transcripts, they would then have their first semester transcripts to include in college applications. So the, your point about there is a trade-off for, for every preference is absolutely true. And that, yep?
And I, I mean, that's right. I think, I think one thing, as we consider that, you know, that really affects only high school students, if we think about it, like their college applications and their need to finish the semester, you know, by the end of, by before winter break. And so if you think about the ratio of grades, we're kind of sacrificing, not sacrificing, we're, you know, kind of prioritizing high school needs over elementary kids on the playground when it's 95 degrees in August. And so I just want to have a little more balance as we think about that. You know, we're, we're responding, obviously so many other factors more than this, but that is the driving factor, and we're responding to, you know, legitimate concerns about, you know, wanting to end it before the break and transcripts and college applications. But I think, you know, as we consider a district that's K-12, pre-K-12, you know, we need, we should, we should really think more thoughtfully in future calendars about balancing all of those things.
Kitty?
Yes, Robin said most of what I was planning to say. My older daughter was in high school when that was really coming up as an issue. And another issue with not ending the semester before winter break is that academically, it does not make sense to have an, almost an entire semester, take two weeks off, and then come back for a week and a half or two weeks to finish it. It's, you know, kids aren't studying in between. You know, everything she said about parents talking about their kids stressed out was absolutely true, and it made a huge difference when it changed.
Alex?
I just want to express thanks for the folks who brought up the different honorific days that we could add. And I was just going to suggest that when you are vetting with the rest of the stakeholders, that we tell them, show them our list of honorific ones, so we can have them brought to our attention sooner.
That's a great point. Thank you for that.
Just to get, we want to make sure that Robin leaves today's meeting with really clear direction in regards to next steps. So if, Robin, can you, if you could pull up the timeline? Because we're in a place where, you know, we have until November, right, for the calendar? You know, Robin will go to all of these groups, and feedback is more, it's not like, we don't ask people to vote, it's more, hey, what do you like about this calendar? What questions or concerns do you have? But given the, given, given the comments we've had tonight, would you want us to, to do a deeper dive on some of those ideas and give those, and so then we could return back with that? You know, with, with, with the idea of, and I was looking at the calendar, some of these federal holidays, you would have to just go observed versus actual holidays to accomplish some of the, some of these, like the split weeks like that. Veterans Day is kind of, it's in, it's like on a Tuesday. So you, I don't, I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to do something like that, or we'd have to give the 10th off somehow, some way. I think, I, I say all this to say, I don't, you know, this thing is, you know, this, this is a process to get board feedback and to drive and direct what that looks like. And to the extent, if there are significant changes, like if we're gonna, if we're gonna make big moves around, you know, the start date of the school year, or, you know, structuring the, the PD days and the, and the holidays in a way where there's more five-day weeks, and stay aligned with St. Rain and, and CU, which I know is, is a big priority. I think there's some room and space to do that. I guess the question would be, would we need to do more community-wide feedback? Which we could do. We could do something, we could, we could push something out to the entire community. Or we can go with the typical feedback, which is just going through these advisory groups, which we've gone through on multiple occasions. I just want to make sure that we have clarity around what the Board would like for us to do as we proceed. This is a big responsibility of the Board to approve the calendar. There'd be a lot of, if you haven't gotten a lot of feedback after this conversation, I'm sure we will. But I would, would just love that direction, so we could set Robin up for success.
Beth, and then Kitty?
Yeah, thanks for that, Rob. I really appreciate all of Jason's points. I think, oh, I don't know, about once a week or twice a month, we hear from community members still. I'm sure, I can, you can imagine the number of emails we get around this exact topic. And I, I kind of echo what Jason says. A lot of people that talk to me say, why are we going back to school? It's so hot. Like, there's not enough shade on the playgrounds. What's going to happen to my kid? And I, I hear a lot of that. But I also understand there are a lot of good reasons to have high school kids have that winter break as a sacred time. I hear that. I did hear feedback from the community on the surveys that were done, I guess, in 2020 and 2022. Several people have said, and again, it's anecdotal, I never saw this survey. I never filled out this survey. So when you say, should we gather greater community feedback, I kind of think yes. I don't know how that needs to be done, but I think it warrants a coming back to the table to do that again. So that's all. Sorry to add to the do list.
Kitty?
I just turned off my camera accidentally. Um, current parents in the district, in all probability, did not have kids in the district when we ended the semester after winter break. And it was almost universally disliked, you know, as Robin attested the, I mean, I never went to the Board because it didn't occur to me to go and speak to the Board about it when my kids were in school. And I, so I strongly support ending the semester before winter break, for the reasons I stated before. And also was going to point out that 64% of the folks that we gathered information from wanted to keep it that way, too. But I am not at all opposed to gathering more information. I would be opposed to ending the semester, I'm sorry, after winter break.
Jason, then Alex.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to create a contentious issue here, and my comments were more just forward-thinking, like as, you know, not so much to change this calendar, but more future considerations. But I will say, you know, there's school districts like all over the country that start after Labor Day and go, and go through June. There's colleges all over the country that start, you know, a similar time, and students deal with those issues around winter break all over the country. And so that's not, we're not, you know, I just, I want us to, to think about other considerations in addition to the needs of high school kids in that break. And so that was my only point. And I think there's, as I said, there's plenty of examples, whether, you know, K-12 or higher ed around the country where people do it and have been doing it for years. I think all of us probably went to school with that setup and did just fine. So I, I think, you know, that's, like I said, I don't, I don't have a, to your comment, Dr. Anderson, about feedback for Robin, this is not really for this calendar. It's as we think about future calendars. Although I do agree with Beth, I would like to get more information on that survey and really get a, a better understanding of what people are saying or how many people are responding to these questions.
Having been in the contract negotiations with the BVEA and knowing that we have a, an issue where we're trying to have higher participation in the professional development days, do we have the ones that the district is doing centrally lined up with other holidays? Because that's where I think two things are at odds. So if we put them together, we will have less participation in PD, even if that is easier for the parents. So that's the other trade-off of that one.
So I'm going to piggyback on that because that was one of my comments, participating in negotiations. Couple of things came up around attendance, around attendance and ability for us to get substitute teachers before and after observed breaks, as well as the attendance at professional development days, and how our calendar, a lot of the conversation that came up in my small group was around how our calendar might need to change and flex to help accomplish some of those negotiated items. And so thinking through, you know, how my, how, how does our calendar help or hinder some of the goals of the district? And then to Lelania's point around those partial weeks and those floating PD days together, I, I do think that adhering to that promise about limiting partial weeks and thinking through PD days when they occur to maximize attendance. So those, particularly, I'm thinking about those floating ones in April and then in October, there's like just one day all by itself as a PD day or a conference exchange. How can we move those around to help work through those goals? And might we, that be some, changes I would assume, or opinions might come out of the negotiation process as that continues there. But that was something that was also on my mind, how this calendar works, works the best interests of our staff. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you both for bringing up those points. I think that those things are both, you know, the idea around PD days and making sure that they're positioned in a way where we have good attendance and then, and then honoring the, you know, the flexibility within negotiations, having some flexibility around the calendar based on what comes out of our negotiations. You know, the guiding principles is really what dictates most of what Robin puts together, right? And so those are board guiding principles. They were, were they, were they developed by the board? Give us a little bit of history around the guiding principles and then come back to me because I just, I just want to have one other thing to say.
So the guiding principles do predate me in terms of my facilitation of the development process, but it is my understanding that they are board-acknowledged at the bare minimum guiding principles that were created by a collaborative group of parent and family representatives, licensed staff, classified staff, district leaders, and, and building leaders. And so it was a substantial task force, if you will, that both queried the community, is my understanding, and then created these, these principles as a result.
And I would say, in my, in my experience here with this, which is not unlike a lot of decisions that this Board will make, it's, it's all about give and take, right? You'll solve one problem, then people think you're creating another. So I think that, that the principles and the process, you know, if, if we were going to gather some more feedback, you know, we would have to really get direction that the principles are guiding, but we'd have some flexibility to go around that to consider other options. And then, and then the other P- And then, and then the other piece that I think, as we talk about teacher attendance, is that if we get too far out of line with our surrounding districts where at least 40 to 45% of our teachers live, then that will create maybe, maybe an invisible barrier that folks might not see. So we are happy to move forward and proceed in, in, in any way that the board would like. What I'm hearing now is there's some interest in potentially gathering some more feedback like we did in 2022, being really transparent and, and making sure that we're advertising what those results are, bringing those results very transparently. And we'll just have to get the right slicers in the data, so you can see what high school parents, middle school, elementary school parents think. We could do some thinking through doing a survey and pushing that out and trying to get some information. And whether we use that now or whether we use that in the future, I think it's good for that, for, for us to have. And then we'll, we'll, we'll pay attention to the priorities that come up in negotiations. And as Robin is going forward, the calendar as it sits today, she can share with all of those groups that our board has brought up some, you know, there's, there's, they're, they're, they're really looking for new and different input, potentially a, a more recent, maybe collection of input to, to give us direction to, as opposed to, here's the calendar, do you like it or not? Just try to open that up to a little more dialogue.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and I do see it as kind of two, two different tasks. Maybe a desire to revisit the guiding principles, which might be a little bit longer process that occurs outside of this current calendar piece, or after we approve these calendars. And then more specific information to these calendars, if, particularly if those guiding principles are part of a negotiated contract. Does that make sense? And then I have one wondering, we never start school on Mondays. And the first day of professional development, teachers coming back to school is never on a Monday, it's always on a Tuesday. Why, why do we never start anything on a Monday?
That is a, that's a great and curious question, right? So that actually is based on input and feedback from our Unit B employees. That when you re-entry can be a challenge, and there is a lot to building up one stamina, if you will, primarily for students. And knowing that we have five professional learning days for staff that, that precede immediately the start for students, and the belief among much of our licensed staff that it's better for students to have a little bit of an easier transition by not starting on a Monday. There was a time in the past, not too far in the past, that the calendar was changed to start on a Monday. And there was overwhelming feedback from our Unit B employees that it would be better for students in their first experience back in the fall to not start on a Monday. And from that start, we back up five days, and, and licensed staff comes back five days before students.
Thanks, Robin. Lelania, and then Kitty.
I first agree with you, Nicole, that we should revisit that on some level, because that is another partial week that we add to the calendar. Second, if we could include Weld County's schedule, that would be great, because I know a lot of our staff is feeding in from Weld. I was trying to think of what adjoining school districts we could look at, so that we're making sure we are paying attention to what, what the schedules are for, if our teachers have school, you know, kids in different school district. But I would think Weld would be one of those we need to pay attention to.
Dr. Anderson.
We, we actually have the statistics on where all of our employees live. And so we could, we could use that as a, as a factor. I believe it's same frame, then maybe Adams 12 or Jeffco, I don't know that, yeah, I don't know that, that, but we can, we can double-check, right? But that makes sense. And then Adams 12 has gone with a whole different kind of a calendar where they have more full weeks off, right? So I think they have a week off in February, then they have spring break, then they have like an October break, right? So it's long stretches and then weeks off at a time. And so that's, that's the most different calendar, I think, that I know of the surrounding districts. And they just recently went to that, but it's something maybe we could take a look at and, you know, learn from.
Kitty.
So first of all, I realize I probably sounded pretty strident when I said I would not support ending the semester after January. If our community wanted to do that, I would support it. The other thing is that the benefit of being the oldest person on the school board is I have history with the district. And I agree with the idea of not having a whole lot of partial weeks. But I would say that the calendars we have had in recent years, including this one, is a lot better than it used to be. So, I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't strive to be even better, but it's also a good idea to look back and say, well, how was it then? And is this an improvement or not? When my kids were in school, there were no full weeks in February. It actually changed when my younger daughter was in schools, and that definitely helped. But that's all.
Any further questions or comments for Robin, board members?
Seeing as there are no further questions, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to share this thoughtful presentation. Thank you to our community members and community groups that do provide regular insight into our calendars. I know it's always full of trade-offs and thoughts and opinions, but we end up in a good place in the end. So thank you for that, Robin. And, did you, Dr. Anderson, did you have something, or, no?
I just have a quick question. When we come up with something and say, hey, we'd like to do another survey, how much does it cost to do one? And do we have like an ongoing mechanism where it's pretty easy to do? Or is it a big hassle every time? Or if we wanted to have a regular thing where we get input on a regular basis, could we have a system? So we'd be able to ask questions every once in a while without it being a big burden? Well, I'm, you know, I think, you know, coming up with a survey, a few hours of staff time, right? And then we have platforms, and then maybe a few hours to analyze. The, the trick is that to get the participation, right? So that would be like, you know, Jonathan's team would, you know, we'd work with them on the survey, Robin would spend some time working on them, working on the survey. One of the hidden costs, right, are the marketing, the communications, the constant, you know, all of those communications. Hey, remember to do your survey, right? Because if folks haven't seen the survey, right, or if a survey only hits a small population, then the results being valid and reliable are difficult. So the work really gets to really notifying the community that the survey is out there. I mean, we could go with a polling company, a third party, to try to do some different things, pushing things out, different technologies. You might get better information, costs would probably go up significantly, but staff time would be preserved. So anytime that, anytime that we decide to do something, it's gonna cost money in either time and salaries or otherwise. And so, but that's what we're here to do, right? So if these are things that are, that are important to the board, we're happy to, to spend the extra time and dig into these things and, and do the best we can to figure out the information and, and share it with you.
Thanks again, Robin. And as there are no further questions, that we're gonna call a recess while we rearrange the boardroom.
We will now reconvene our meeting with the reading of the land acknowledgement. Beth, would you please read the land acknowledgement for us?
I would love to. Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Puebloan, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land, who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students, so that we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous people, and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
I'd like to remind everyone that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging and meaningful and engaging learning opportunities, so that all should then thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here in person and remotely. We are glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would like to see if anybody would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Moved by Beth, seconded by Lelania. Laura, can you please call the roll? Chavez?
Yes.
Medler?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Quinlanaweta?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent? Board member Sargent, you're muted.
Oh, I, I thought I had unmuted it, yes.
Unger?
Here, yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks. The first item on our agenda this evening is the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, Board President Raj Paul, members of the board. Good to see you all. So lots happened since the last time we've had an opportunity to meet. And I believe that Randy's got some slides and pictures to, to pull up. This morning, I want to thank Nicole and Alex for being there for the New Vista Topping Off Ceremony, and Jason as well. Sorry about that, Jason. It was a really big milestone in the project. A topping off ceremony, for those who don't know, is when the highest beam on the building is placed. And it was really high up there today. It was making me a little bit nervous to watch them actually climb up there and, and place the beam. It was, I think Principal John Masakluski did an awesome job, really just recognizing and reminding folks what New Vista is about and why we're building this new facility. Last week, students had an opportunity to add their names to the beam. That's, that was the beam that was hung this morning and hoisted in a place. And so really just proud of the project for community members. If you pass by it on Broadway, it's the, it's the beautiful new school that's going up right there near baseline and Broadway. Very, very excited about New Vista. Board members, at the beginning of this month, we had educators from school districts across the state come to BVSD to learn about what we're doing to support the surge of migrant students in BVSD and into Colorado as, as they've arrived to our community. And to really recognize and allow folks to learn more about our incredible newcomer programming. This event was coordinated by Colorado Department of Education. And we were visitors at our Arapaho Ridge Program at Boulder and Santoris High Schools. They were able to hear directly from our amazing students, administrators, teachers, and, and the stu, the stories that some of our students were sharing, just about the, the challenges in, in, in being able to make it here to, to Boulder Valley. Were really, really inspiring. And a lot of our students have just, just definitely been through a lot on their travels to get here. Also gave us an opportunity to communicate some of the challenges that our district and other districts are facing. And hope that CDE will be considering some of those concerns. I know we'll update in our legislative update, there's some good news on this front on, for districts being able to get some more funding for our, our newcomer students. And so, again, it was, it was a pleasure to host everybody, and just really proud of the, of our, of our schools and our programs as part of that event. Next, we'd like to share congratulations for two BVSD ensembles that were selected out of all the ensembles in Colorado to share their talents and inspire music educators across the state during the Colorado Music Educator Association Conference, held, conference held at the Broadmoor in Colorado Springs a few weeks ago. This is a really big deal. And so I'm very proud and, and happy to congratulate the Fairview High School Jazz Ensemble, directed by Travis Keller. And then Monarch High School's Wind Ensemble, directed by Chuck Stevens. Both groups performed to just packed houses. It was just a wonderful event, just really proud of our students in BVSD and how well they represented our district. And just thankful for CMEA for giving our students an opportunity to present. So last week, unified teams from across the district came together for their annual bowling tournament at the Coal Creek Bowling Center in Lafayette. I know Kitty was able to attend. This tournament features students from all of our comprehensive high schools with a team competition. And then awards are presented to the top bowler in each school. As always, these events are just a great opportunity for our students to meet and to get to know other students while practicing life skills in a fun, supportive environment. Want to thank Jennifer Dixon from Monarchio, I know helped doing a lot of the coordinating. We recognized her recently at superintendent's recognition ceremony a few weeks back. And our next unified event will be a basketball tournament in March. And so very excited to be able to go and check that out. And then finally, one more update before our student moment. For those who didn't know, this year Casey Middle School is turning 100. That is a, is a remarkable, remarkable accomplishment. And to celebrate, students are putting together an exhibit at the Museum of Boulder with artifacts, filled with artifacts from a century of educating students in North Boulder. We're told it about, took about three months and some visits to the Carnegie Library just to put it together. Not to mention collecting some treasures from, throughout the community, from, from our community members. So thank you, community members. We, we do expect that there'll be a celebration at the school this semester. I'll make sure that it be announced that, so board members can attend if you're able to. And then finally, it's our student moment. Today, we're excited to have a group of students from Nevin Platt Middle School here in Boulder and their principal, Brooke Dare. Brooke, I understand these students represent your Inspire Ed program, which is an opportunity to give you and your team some guidance as you work to build a positive school culture.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson, and the school board, and President Raj Paul for having us this evening. We're very excited to be here to celebrate the work of our counselors and our students. Social emotional well-being and growth is a core belief of Platt and Choice, and is something we value deeply within our community. And above all else, our primary goal is to foster a positive and inclusive culture where all students and staff can feel safe, respected, and welcome. This work allows everyone in our community to have a sense of belonging where they can feel, where they can be their best and authentic self. In order to create this environment day to day, it takes ongoing respectful and caring interactions, understanding and compassionate support, along with continuous, direct, and clear instruction. So to this end, we interweave the philosophy, framework, and resources from four nationally research-based programs as the foundation of our work. No Place For Hate, Sources Of Strength, Inspire Ed, and 360. And tonight, we're here to highlight one of these programs, which is Inspire Ed. Inspire Ed was created by the sale, I'm sorry, by the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence with the core belief that young people matter and that they are capable of being active agents and improving their schools by elevating student voices and empowering young people to influence their school culture. So I'd like to introduce Bryant Strauss, one of our school counselors, who helps facilitate this program.
Thank you for having us. I've been running this program for four years at the middle school, and I'm always so impressed. We started with about 10 student leaders, and now we are up to 20. And our students are so passionate, and they know so much. And giving them the voice and empowering them to help them shape their own community has been such a delight to be a part of. And I'm gonna let you guys hear from the students to hear what I mean and to see how this program has really helped us.
Hello, I'm April Sapuka, a seventh grader at Platt, and this is my second year in Inspired Ed. Inspired Ed is a school-based program developed by Yale, and its mission is to positively impact schools through connection, collaboration, and creativity. At Platt, the leadership program is about 20 students from all grade levels and from both Platt and Choice. Our process is to assess the climate test that the whole school takes in October. As a group, we analyze the data and then pick a focus to improve. We plan and implement a school-wide intervention, and then the school takes another survey in April, and we see our results.
Next slide, please. Thank you. My name is Keon Cam.
My name is Keon Campbell. I'm in eighth grade, and this is my third year in the Inspire Ed program, and I'll be talking about what we did last year. So last school year, when we took the climate survey, we noticed that the point today, I heard an adult talk about my school as a community, was lower than we would like it. So we wanted to improve that. So for the strategies, we had the admin and counselors interview the staff and like talk to them about what we could do to help with that. And then the Inspire Ed group, I want to create an event where the entire school could come together as one community. So then for our action plan, the staff did this really fun community day at the beginning of the year. I quite enjoyed it. And then the Inspire Ed group did a school-wide lip sync battle last April. That one was also really fun. And as part of that, each team designed activities to build community. And I'd say that it worked really well, since there was a 14% increase in that score from 52% to 66%. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Johnson, a seventh grader at Platt Middle School, and I've been in Inspired Ed for two years. This year, we believe that the gossiping and rumor percentage was too high at 58%. As an Inspired Ed group, we agreed to plan an intervention over the next few weeks to implement in March, April. Thank you for letting us share what we do at Platt Middle School.
Thank you, Platt Middle School, for being here and all the amazing work you're doing. Board members, that concludes Superintendent's remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and thank you to our Platt Middle Schoolers for sharing your efforts around improving school climate and culture. It's very meaningful. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for Dr. Anderson? I just wanted to add that I was able to attend the newcomer event, and it was really inspiring to see all of the leaders from across the region really coming together to think through how to help really serve the needs of those students. And it was great to have BVSD really be a strong example with the work that we have been doing, the work that we continue to do. So thanks to everybody who helped with that event. And I also want to say the event at Justice, not at Justice High, at New Vista High today was really exciting to be able to sign the beam, to see the crowds, to really appreciate the views. So thank you to our community who really supported the work of that building with a bond. The next item we have on our agenda this evening is public participation. The board respects the right of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of its schools. The board does not endorse the comments of any speaker. It reminds all those who speak that you are responsible for your own speech. Speakers will each have two minutes to speak. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and an orange card when you have 10 seconds remaining. If you run out of time, or if you'd like to share any additional comments or feedback to the board, you may email us if you wish. Our first speaker tonight is Riley LaFerty, who received two minutes from Stella Murray.
Hello. When, can I start whenever? Okay. Hello, my name is Riley LaFerty, and I'm a senior at Fairview High School and a student at Hairstyling II at Boulder Tech. My classmates and I found out that our programs would be cut within the next three years. I am here to talk to you today about that. Over the last couple of years, being in the hairstyling classes, I have learned a lot and become a more well-rounded person. At the beginning of last year, I was shy and self-conscious. I was terrified to put myself out there. The kid I was then would have never stood in front of this board to talk about something that I care about. Being in the hairstyling program has allowed me to grow and gain confidence in a way that I can't imagine I would have without it. On top of this growth, I've also gotten the education so that I can get my hairstyling license right out of high school. I fully intend to get that license and go to college to get a degree. I plan to use hairstyling to support myself while I'm in college and then use what I gain through college to support myself in my hairstyling career afterwards. I think that adding programs to Boulder Tech is a great idea. When the 2022 Facilities Critical Needs Plan was approved, it highlighted the promise to expand career and technical education opportunities. I don't see how getting rid of, I don't see how getting rid of three programs that BVSD students have zero access to without these programs is expanding career and technical education opportunities. I am sure that many of you are familiar with Senate Bill 19-176 Concerning Concurrent Enrollment. But for those of you who are not, I will give a brief overview. This bill indicates that if a student wishes to earn post-secondary course credit, then when still enrolled in high school and the district does not have that course or the equivalent, then given that the student applies to the superintendent and gets approval, the district is responsible for paying for that student to take a course at a partnered school. BVSD is partnered with CU Boulder, Front Range Community College, and Metro State Denver. Through this bill, it is clarified that this includes technical, career and technical education certification programs or licensing as well as college credit. Also, within the bill, it stresses that, and I quote, "A local education provider shall not limit the number of post-secondary courses, including academic courses, which may include coursework related to apprenticeship programs or internship programs in which a qualified student may concurrently enroll during the ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, except to the degree that the local education provider is unable to provide access to the post-secondary course due to technological capacity." CU Boulder has Geology Class 1,150 named Water, Energy, and Environment: An Introduction to Earth Resources, which to me sounds pretty similar to a natural resources class. This means, and Metro State Denver has a Culinary Arts Certificate, which one of my classmates will touch on later. This means that there are already places where students can take these courses. Neither CU Boulder, Metro State Denver, or Front Range Community College has any places where students can get the education needed to take a, to get their cosmetology license. To me, it seems that taking away three cosmetology programs and replacing them with culinary arts and natural resources would be considered limiting the number of post-secondary courses and not supporting Senate Bill 19-176, that is to my understanding of it. I would request that the board would consider what I've said and reconsider the elimination of the cosmetology programs. They have made me into the person that is speaking today, and I definitely would not be here without them. I've also emailed each board member a copy of what I have said with my sources and footnotes as well as visuals, and the same things for what my classmates are also going to say today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Carly Martella, who was given two minutes from Isaac Leonard Hetrick.
Stylist, and even having graduated from Boulder Tech's Cosmetology Program in 1990, I grew up with a pretty much built-in love for cosmetology. Whether it was playing with someone's hair or applying makeup to my friends, I fell in love with the artistry and the opportunity to express my creativity. When I found out that I had the opportunity to attend Boulder Tech and begin my journey to getting licensed to do hair, I jumped at the chance, and I have been fortunate enough to also be a part of the esthetician program as well. Over the course of the last two years in these cosmetology programs, I have been able to grow not only professionally but as a person as well, and I have noticed a new level of self-confidence and self-love. I will be eligible to be licensed as a hairstylist and as an esthetician at the end of the school year, which is an opportunity that I would not have had otherwise without accruing tens of thousands of dollars in debt. These programs are beneficial to everyone, but especially those who come from lower-income households. I have been told that the reasons behind the cosmetology programs being discontinued are that they do not lead to jobs that are high-paying, high-demand, or have strong community partnerships. When asked about where they got this idea, I was pointed to a compilation of data about the labor market from the Colorado Department of Labor and Employment and the Colorado Workforce Development Council. I reviewed that data, but nowhere does it clearly identify any of the cosmetology industries, so I am confused as to how this conclusion was drawn. In fact, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and I quote, "Overall, employment of barbers, hairstylists, and cosmatologists is projected to grow 8% from 2022 to 2032, faster than the average for all occupations. About 89,400 openings for barbers, hairstylists, and cosmatologists are projected each year on average over the next decade." The two programs that are being introduced next year are Natural Resources and Culinary Arts. The data is focused on the top 50 most common jobs in Colorado, meaning that culinary jobs and natural resources jobs are some of the most common jobs in Colorado. I don't think that anyone would try and argue with that. My main concern is why that is relevant. The commonality of something has nothing to do with how high in demand it is or how much you make doing it. This data compares how high in demand and how high-paying jobs are within the top 50 most common jobs. And a cook at a restaurant is near the top of that list, but like I said earlier, the data does not mention anything in the cosmetology industry. Since this is the only data that I was provided with, it seems that the decision to cut the cosmetology programs at Boulder Tech was made purely off the fact that they are not in the list of the top 50 jobs. Not all people who get a license in a cosmetology field will have a job under the same job description. I will give you a couple of examples. You could be a hairstylist, esthetician, nail technician, wig maker, barber, salon manager, salon owner, sales representative, makeup artist, and that's just to name a few. A larger list can be found on one of the documents that my classmate will mention. Therefore, I request that the board withdraw the recommendation to eliminate the cosmetology programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public participant this evening is attending virtually, Jocelyn Padilla.
Hello, my name is Jocelyn Padilla. I am a senior at Boulder High and a Hairstyling II student at Boulder Tech. As mentioned by my classmates, we were very upset to be notified on the fact that we would be losing our program. One of the main reasons that I personally am upset about losing this program is because we are losing a humongous chunk of our diversity. Our cosmetology department is one of the biggest departments to host all diversity. This year, there was a total of 113 Hispanic or Latino students at Boulder Tech. Thirty-seven of them were placed in our three cosmetology departments. The other 73 were in the other 13 programs. When looking at the math, that shows about six in every other program compared to ours. Last year, there was an average of eight in each cosmetology program and five in the other programs. Please note the fact that the removal of this program will decrease the amount of Hispanic or Latino participation within Boulder Tech. As a low-income student myself, I quite literally had no plan for college. When I was provided this program as a last resort by my counselor, I saw it as an opportunity to grow. So did a few other of my classmates, just to name a few, Yareli Ordaz, Juan David, and many more. All of these students have been attempting their hardest to either get their cosmetology license or try and finish it and be able to pursue secondary education in cosmetology. With the removal of this department, we will be losing our interest of diversification, especially with programs that Latino and Hispanics are actually showing interest to. I ask the board that they please reconsider the decision to remove our cosmetology departments.
Thank you. Our next participant this evening is Jared Dugan.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Jared Dugan, a second-year student in the hairstyling program at Boulder Tech, a third-year student of Monarch High School, and currently employed at Cantorn Company, a salon in Boulder. I've come to talk to you about the removal of the cosmetology programs from Boulder Tech and my experience in the BVSD's College Before Graduation Program. As you know, one of the programs that will be replacing cosmetology will be Culinary Arts. My first semester of my senior year, instead of going to my home high school, Monarch, I got the amazing opportunity to have my own Culinary Arts Program through classes at MSU Denver. These courses included classes RST 1200 and RST 390A, B, and C, one of them a basic cooking class. This class served as an introduction to fundamental cooking skills, methods, theories, and techniques. We learned to demonstrate proficiency in food safety and sanitation principles, and learned to incorporate sustainable food practices, including local food sourcing, composting, and upcycling. My other classes consisted of three five-week courses, European, Asian, and Latin American cuisine. In these classes, we explored the culinary history, traditional cooking methods, indigenous ingredients, and roles played as a part of global food culture. I was able to take these classes due to BVSD's College Before Graduation Program. These classes were more than enough to fulfill my culinary beginnings. MSU has a great culinary program that was very cost-linient. It was always an easy commute, whether I was driving or taking public transit.
You can finish that thought.
Okay. As a student from the hairstyling program and a student from the Culinary Arts Program at MSU, the removal of the cosmetology programs for something that is easily offered through college before graduation raises important questions about the future direction of our educational choices. Let's advocate for programs that empower students to explore passions and careers seamlessly, ensuring a diverse and enriching educational landscapes for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Jamal Gilmore.
How's it going, everybody? Good to see you again. One thing we haven't shown or talked about yet is that how cosmetology or barbering or the hair industry is female-led. And I feel like there's not very many other female-led industries in your tech program, and I'm seeing some shakes of heads. And so, with that said, that says like, when you're a mom and you have to go to a baseball game or you have to go to any other kind of facility thing, you have to take off. And if you're a cook or somewhere in the green space, you won't be allowed to do that. Because when I say you need to work, you need to work. And if you don't work, you're fired. So as a cook, you can't have a flexibility of a schedule like we do as hairstylists. Oh, to introduce myself, I am the owner, operator, genius of the Brooklyn Barber Academy. Most of you know me as Coach Jamal, Coach Gilmore. I am a part of the civic engagement in this town. Like, as a hairdresser, I'm a coach, I'm a confidant, I'm a mentor. A lot of people have been in my shop here today. I'm also, if you notice, I'm black, so I am the unique person out here. That means we're diversity. And you all speak about inclusivity, diversity, and all the really pretty language around education and being a community, but what you're doing is you're killing diversity. Because in hair, you don't have to be pretty. You don't have to be skinny. You don't have to be a male. You don't have to be a woman. You don't have to have a sex. It's just about hair. And I look around here and I see you guys, I notice, like, I cannot know your names, but your haircut costs more than a Great Clips haircut. Let's just say that. Let's say like you've empowered a bunch of hairdressers in this town to be, I own property. I have, you know, I grossed over $100,000 last year singularly, not as a business. As my business, we did over $400,000 in revenue. So, and that's just one hairdressing shop, and there's 176 hairdressing shops in town. I am eight weeks booked out. So we need these young people. These young people will help maintain vitality in our business, in our communities, because they will be the next coaches and the next people in there. Thank you so much. Have a great night. All you have great hair.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Erin Wilson. Yep, Ashley Cardos, who was received, granted two minutes from Erin Wilson.
Okay, is there a button here I have to push? Okay, all right. My name's Ashley Cardos. I'm a mom of two boys at Nederland Elementary. I serve on the PTA Board and SAC. I'm a prior elementary admin, and I'm passionate about ensuring equity for our mountain schools. As discussed at the Nederland School Board Forum in October, four of the chairs here heard about the dis- four of the chairs here heard about the disparities between the mountain schools and those in the valley. This goes beyond the dollar expenditure per student and is a widely-held belief in our community. The perception that we are given less is a lens for every interaction, and it'll take consistent effort by this board and leadership to correct. The following are just a few of the areas that need immediate action to address these concerns. SAC. NES does not have SAC, a critical element of school and community wellness. There are, however, many schools in Boulder that have early and extended care. Many of our families work in Boulder. An eight-hour workday easily turns into nine-plus hours with commute, but schools only in session for seven and a half. We lack supplemental care options as a community. Attending this meeting alone is costing me nearly a hundred dollars in childcare with commute. Why are the basic needs of our working families unable to be met while a majority of families down in Boulder get care? How is a Ned family expected to work full-time? Isn't that a district goal for kids to be career and college-ready? How can we model a career-ready life to our kids when working families are denied support such as SAC? FTE allocations. The lacking FTE at our schools has a direct impact on kids and culture. By applying an equal FTE calculation across schools, mountain schools are disproportionately penalized for having a smaller population. Our schools also struggle with recruiting and retaining staff. Being twenty miles up the canyon limits our talent pool for qualified applicants. Hiring takes more time, prep, and care. However, again, the equality of employee bene- the quality of employee benefits and pay across the district disadvantages us as there is less incentive for the broader population to even want to commute to Nederland. What incentives can be implemented to resolve this challenge? Even more, our rate of staff turnover has notably increased this year and will continue into the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Can the district partner with our interview committees to ensure rigorous process of hiring qualified staff? That would be helpful. These are just a couple examples from a growing list of why the lens I mentioned earlier exists. There's a baseline amount of required services that every student deserves. What are the minimum standards across schools? How will you guarantee equal execution of these standards? BVSD proudly advertises ensuring the allocation of resources is responsive, accountable, and focused on student growth through customized supports. If this is not a commitment, then the strategic plan shouldn't reflect this as a value. In Colorado Schools Finance Act that Polis recently signed, it states, and I know we're not a rural school, but rural schools will get thirty million more to help with their higher costs related to smaller student populations. Colorado rural school- rural schools have gotten similar state aid since 2017. But our mountain schools are not considered rural since we belong to an urban district. It feels like we're between a rock and a hard place, and the sense of urgency for more action is real and critical. This year, my husband and I now fear that we've made a mistake in making Netherlands our home for no other reason but the schools. The amount of advocacy required from families this year to feel seen, heard, and valued and secure has been a lot. Why should I continue to choose NES or BVSD? My expectation as a taxpayer and resident is that keeping my kids here is a no-brainer, that these things are standard without this much parent output. Operating this way easily translates into feeling neglected. This neglect is either intentional or stems from ignorance. My goal here is to shine a spotlight on some of the critical needs and disparities that the current policies create for mountain schools, as well as to eliminate any excuse for ignorance of our plight. From now on, any continued inaction or communication can only be from neglect. Trust in this board and leadership will come with evidence of authentic and public advocacy for Ned schools. Please, on behalf of our kids, help us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Steve Peek. Seeing as Steve does not appear to be present, we will move on to Sarah Andrews.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Andrews, and I'm the parent of two kids at Nederland Elementary School. My husband and I are public servants who do not have the ability to work remotely. In fact, I'm here tonight on my lunch break. The past few months, we've had several concerns arise about the level of support NES receives. But tonight, I'm here to talk about the fact that mountain kids have no access to school-age care or summer programming that students on the flats do. This has created safety issues for our kids and resulted in hardships in our careers. When I have reached out to the district about providing access to SAC or additional resources for our school, I have often been ignored or told that the district doesn't have to. And my question to you tonight is, why doesn't BVSD want to? With failing enrollments- falling enrollment rates, it seems that BVSD is at a crossroads. You could choose to spend your time looking outward, trying to attract people to the district, or you could look inward and focus on creating amazing programs for the students you already have. I think that if you do that, people will naturally be drawn to the district. The kids in this district deserve to be thought of as more than test scores or FTE percentages. They are amazing individuals worthy of more than the minimum the district has to provide. Thank you for your service on the board and your time this evening.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Peg Shipert.
Good evening. My name's Peg Shipert, and I am here tonight as a co-chair for the BVSD Title IX Stakeholder Council. And for those of you who don't know, we are a staff-appointed council that works with Liz Lindell, the district Title IX coordinator. Our council is composed of community members, BVSD staff, parents, and scholars. And together, we have a pretty broad and deep knowledge and experience of a lot of issues related to Title IX. I'm here tonight to bring your attention to a report that we recently prepared identifying several priority areas that we believe require urgent attention and recommending specific actions to address those areas. We have five main recommendations. The first is that the district contract with a third party to perform a strengths and needs assessment of Title IX activities. The second is that the district improve support in a few specific ways to students who are working on Title IX issues. The third is that the district expand the nature and scope of the Title IX Advisory Councils, which includes the Stakeholders Council that I'm a part of and also the Title IX Student Council. The fourth recommendation is that the district revise the scope and distribution of labor for Title IX activities. And five, that the district prepare and publish an annual report of Title IX metrics. So you should all have received the report, I believe, at this point. And all of these recommendations are described in much greater detail in that report. Thanks.
Thank you. This concludes today's public participation. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to share your thoughts and experiences with us tonight. We will now move on to the next item of our agenda, which is board member communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Actually, let me- Kitty, would you- do you have anything you'd like to share this evening? Kitty, you're muted.
Sorry. That's gonna be on my tombstone. Last night, I was able to go to the Manhattan Middle School presentation of "It's a Bard's Day Night", and it was wonderful. This is a seventh and eighth-grade class taught by Brandon Price. And he created this show from scratch. He picked a Shakespeare monologue for each of the students. The students obviously memorized them. And the students chose a Beatles song that they wanted to accompany their monologue. And it was an orchestral arrangement, not them actually singing. Otherwise, we wouldn't have heard the kids. But they had a great time. They did a talk back afterwards, and it was just so much fun. And I'm so glad they did that, and I was able to go. And then, as Rob had mentioned, I did go to the bowling tournament a couple of weeks ago. And I spoke to Jen, who was the one coordinating it, and told her that in the past, the board had been specifically invited through an email to all of the Boulder Unified Team events. And I told her, I think we would love to get that again. You know, it shows up on- in news and notes, but it's buried in a list there. So we should be receiving invitations for any upcoming events this year and going forward. And I recommend going if you can. The kids are delightful. They are so supportive of each other. They're so excited for each other. It's- you know, there are so many friends from one school and, you know, another. Unlike typical teenagers who can be kind of clicky, these kids are not. They are great. So that's all I have to say. It was wonderful.
Beth?
Thanks for sharing that, Kitty. What you shared reminded me. I had the opportunity to go to Legally Blonde at Platt Middle School, I don't know, a week or two ago. And it felt like all of Boulder was there. I mean, it was like getting tickets last minute was impossible. They were completely sold out. It was wild. But it was lovely, and the kids did a great job, and it was a lot of fun to watch. I was able to join Rob and Laura today at another teacher roundtable, and it's always such a great opportunity. It's hard to make time sometimes in our schedules with work and whatnot, but I really value the opportunities I have to listen to teachers one-on-one, hearing about their experiences, and just really knowing what's on their mind. Because it helps when you're sitting here and gives so much context for us. So I just want to say thank you for that listening opportunity, Rob, and how much I appreciate that.
Alenia?
I wanted to thank our community for bringing forward their broad and deep knowledge. Thank you to our Title IX council for bringing forward. I think it's understated, the amount of community expertise we have in Title IX and sexual assault prevention. So I just want to give kudos to our community for looking out for one another. Thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, I have a few things. One, I was- we had the Audit Committee met this week. And first off, I want to thank the staff, Bill and his team, but also Robert Smart for really careful and in-depth analysis. And other people have said it before about what a great asset Robert is, but you see him in action, and you're like, whoa, how'd we get that? In addition to the staff. A few things to share about the audit or our meeting. We reviewed the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year's second quarter financials, which give us the amount we spent and received through December through the end of the year, and then how much was on each fund and how that compared to last year. And it's similar to the stuff we've had presented to us before. But within that report, it's really pretty clear that we are doing pretty well financially in terms of staying on our budget or under it and being in relatively good shape for districts coming out of like the COVID pandemic and the end of ESRS money. A few things I- that were really notable for me, I'd like to share. One thing that's interesting is people have talked publicly about their concern about sort of the end of the COVID money running out. And one thing good to know is that, as a relatively high affluent district, we didn't get as much per kid. But what we did was concentrated on our schools with the most low-income kids. And so, like, while our regular programming might not feel a hit, this is another reason why we need to reserve money for our differentiated spending program, because that's the thing that has probably received more of the ESRS money for our schools with higher concentrations. So when we see ourselves making our commitment to continue the differentiated funding and trying to pay for those out years, that's a necessary thing to do, and the end of the ESRS money kind of complicates that. Another thing, I think, there's data in there about the cost of the preschool program. And we've heard about the hassles of starting the program. I myself, I'm a huge fan of expanding universal preschool and support the state moving in that direction. And I believe ultimately that school districts will probably earn the lion's share of the students once people figure out like the pay scale that we provide, which is one of the best indicators you can have of quality preschool because it leads to people staying in the job. And so, we have commitments to our staff to give them livable wages, and we have preschool that we provide with our staff. So what do you know, we pay more than other districts. And when our enrollment didn't go up as much as we thought it would, it turns out we spent about 1.2 million extra. I could be corrected on the totals. But I think that's a bragging point rather than like a complaining point. And I think that we should actually tell the community about it and say, by the way, if you enroll in BVSD's early childhood programs next year, which they will do through choice and they can figure out where they want to go, you will be benefiting from our extra investment in this because we want to integrate it into our successful system. So I think we could complain about that and say, oh, what a hassle the state system is. Or we could say, I just want to let you know, BVSD is totally committed to all our staff having livable wages. We are totally committed to quality early childhood education, and we will put our resources into it until the state helps us figure this out. So that's one soapbox from that piece. Another thing that pops up in the report is interesting stuff on our workers' comp. And as we go into the negotiation with the BVA, I'm really struck by the data on our workers' comp claims. And it shows, like, we hear about the increase of the stress on teachers from disorder in the classroom or working with kids who are dysregulated and can be violent and upset. But when you see it in the concrete terms of a doubling of workers' comp claims, and then when you look at the month of October and see those, it's like a sobering part, like, I'm not really into budgets, but the things sort of pop out at you, and you go, oh, that's what they're complaining about. Here it shows up even in our budget and our insurance. So those are really real things from that process. And I just want to say, it's really important stuff, and we are well-served by our staff when we deal with it. The other- I wanted to share two other things not about that. I was at the DAC meeting last week or two weeks ago in Nicole. And I want to say, for all the people that have been campaigning this time, and you've spent twenty meetings having thirty seconds to talk about something, you should go to DAC because you will spend two hours having fifty really informed, committed, intelligent people having super-deep conversations about deep stuff. And it is sort of like the- it's the other side of the planet from campaigning for office, is to listen to the DAC address their issues. And they're dealing with important stuff, and we should- we should listen to them. Also, last night, I had the pleasure of going to the Jewish Community Centers Forum on Hate Speech and Hate Crimes, which was put on by District Attorney Michael Dougherty. Was attended by every police force within a long range and a very diverse, committed panel. And I just want to say, one of the things that came up was the fear amongst many communities that are often the victims of hate speech or hate- or biased crimes about the fears that going into a national election cycle brings. And I must say, when I've heard from parents about, just sort of anecdotally, like the- how you deal with young people in our schools using the N-word or whatever it is in terms of hate speech against other students and the casualness with which our- at least our adolescents do it. So yes, these are young kids, and they will do stupid things. But I think we should be thinking about doubling down on our No Place For Hate programs and other things that go on because we're just going to see more increases than that over the next fifteen months. If I'm- if I could bet on it in Vegas, I would. And then finally, I just want to go on a much greater pleasure note that the hallway's art is fantastic. I got to meet a couple of the artists, and I encourage you to spend ten minutes and soak it in.
Jason?
Thanks. I can talk about the Casby Day a little bit more, the legislative piece of it during legislative updates, but just wanted to highlight a few things. It was a really cool event, just to be at the Capitol with board members from across the state. And I had the very good fortune of connecting with Lori Goldstein from Adams Twelve, who's about as connective a board member as there is. And she got us on the Senate floor and connected us with a number of our senators, including getting able to chance to talk to our Senator President Fenberg. We went over to the House floor, and we were recognized by the Speaker of the House. Got to sit next to Representative Shannon Byrd, who, good fortune, she happens to co-chair the Joint Budget Committee, which is relevant to the comments that Dr. Anderson made about potentially additional funding for- to assist with newcomer students. But it really just was a really special day to be able to have that access, to have real deep conversations with members of the legislature. And again, just really excited to be able to participate in that. So I can talk about some of the bills in the legislative update separately, but just wanted to raise that. Another thing, this wasn't a visit, but this has been something that's come up. Few of us have raised this over the course of the last few months. But there was an editorial in The Camera, not original to The Camera, I think it was a repost from Bloomberg News, titled "Ban TikTok in School". I think it was a repost from Bloomberg News titled "Ban TikTok in Schools: Get Rid of Cellphones Instead." And I want to just highlight a few things that it said. "It's by now indisputable that allowing kids to have phones in the classroom harms academic performance. It's linked to rising rates of teenage depression, emotional distress, and self-harm." And so I just, that's something I wanted, I don't know if we can formally add to the record, but I think that's another kind of evidence point, pointing to the need for us to kind of have a real robust, in-depth conversation about technology policy. Alex referenced the campaign. There was no issue that came up more during the campaign than mental health. And so here is big flashing red lights, something that is harming students' mental health. And it's actually something we can do, there's something we can do to address that. So I don't know the answer to that. I'm just wanting to kind of help make the case for the need to really kind of think thoughtfully about what our technology policy is. So yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Jorge?
Thank you. I just want to start by thanking all the students we saw speak today. From the youngest students who are talking about their experience measuring the climate in their schools and trying to make some significant change. We know community is a big factor in terms of making people feel welcome to addressing things like hate, addressing things like mental health. And to have students invested in that and building that is so critical. It's a great model for the rest of our schools. And I think something we need to focus on, the ways with climate overall, we have community in schools can address so many of these different issues. And I also appreciate the degree to which our students are so passionate about the programs they believe in and the work that they're doing. I think that speaks a lot to the work that our, that our staff and our students are doing. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thanks. In the last three weeks since we met, it feels like it's been a lifetime. I've had the opportunity to engage with our community in a bunch of different touchpoints. So I was able to attend the BVSD Connects at Alisa Sanchez Elementary and Brewfield Heights Middle School, attended three roundtables, Mesa, Coal Creek, and Fireside Elementarys. And I agree with Beth that every touchpoint that we have with our staff and with our students and with our parents really is incredibly valued to the work we do here. So thank you for those folks that showed up at those events and for letting us listen. Overwhelmingly, the theme from all five of those events were questions and wonderings around declining enrollment. So the work we have tonight and the work we have this month really is on the forefront of our community's mind. So, you know, I'm excited to get through that so we can rest, put some of the anxieties and the worries and the questions of our community at ease. As Alex mentioned, I was able to provide the DAC report to the DAC for the month. And it was a pleasure to be back. The DAC is very informed, very engaged, a great asset. And I was able, by staying at the end, the Budget Subcommittee happened to pull me in and ask a bunch of questions around, what does the Board find valuable in our Board reports? How can we help make this information meaningful to the work of the Board as they work through how they might change their budget survey and their budget process? So just another reminder that staying to the end can provide mutual benefit to the Board members and to the DAC members. Next, with some of my Board members, participated in the very first opening meeting with BVA for negotiations, which was a pleasure and a first for me. I also was able to attend the BVSD's private screening of This Is Not Who We Are. And I just really wanted to thank Nicole Villa and her staff for inviting the Board members to watch that screening with them. It was really, it's a powerful film and it was great to see so many members of our staff watching that, thinking through that, reflecting. Two more items. The folks, kind of related to Jason, which you mentioned, the folks from Healthier Colorado had reached out to chat a little bit about a bill that they are running with Judy Amabile around healthier social media use by youth. It's House Bill 2411-36. And I can talk about that if people are interested. But there are a lot of mental health bills being run this session. And then I had the first of our quarterly meetings with the City of Boulder, CU, County Commissioners. And it was really great to see and hear from all of the folks that are working within the City of Boulder. And the themes from that really were a lot of discussions around housing stock, types of housing availability, new construction. And then the degree to which the COVID relief money disappearing is really impacting all of these entities in very different ways. And it really made me realize and think through probably for the first time how some of our families and some of the members of our community are really going to be hit on multiple levels as programming and services have to be dialed back as that money winds down. So something to think about as we think through our own challenges with that money going away. But that was my last three weeks. Okay, we will now move on to the information items on our agenda. This evening, we only have one information item and that is the legislative update. Dr. Anderson, would you like to begin?
Absolutely. Things are heating up at the Capitol. Just for our public, on February 20th, we'll be hosting a legislative breakfast slash brunch-ish? I'm looking at Laura. I think it's scheduled for like around 10.
More breakfast.
More breakfast.
Unless they've changed the time.
Well, let me double check on that. But on the 20th, and so for any of the members of our delegation who are watching or if you know someone who's on our delegation is watching, we'd love to have them all there to talk about the priorities, the legislative priorities of the Boulder Valley School District. Say the top of our list is some recommendations that are being made by the School Finance Task Force that recently concluded and made some recommendations. I think that the recommendations are strong, provided there's additional funding provided to fund those recommendations. And there's a hold harmless mentality in funding K-12. As it stands today, if the School Finance Formula adjustments are accepted without additional funding, then Boulder Valley will have $7.5 million less on an annual basis to do the things that we do as a district, which is a significant amount of money, especially if you don't really see it coming and you don't have the runway to be able to try to adjust and figure that out. I would say that as a member of the Front Range Superintendent Group, I co-chair that group along with Tracy Dorlan from Jeffco. We are heading down there in March as well as superintendents to advocate for this idea of, A, we do think there should be the funding for rural, continuing funding for our rural districts, our rural partners that, and certainly I think that there's some merit to some of the, some of the aspects of the changes, but without new money taking from some districts and giving to other districts, it's not something we support. And so we'll be sharing our thoughts and opinions on that. And if that, if it does go through without additional funding, Board members, we'll just have to have some tough conversations. $7.5 million in recurring money means we're going to have to take services away from students, going to have to hire less people or we'll have to pay people less. 90% of our money is in people. And so in any event, I think that, my hope is that we're able to advocate in the right ways that we do think that there's funding that can be spent on public education in the budget and that's what we advocate for. But that's the biggest thing happening right now legislatively that we're watching and paying attention to.
Jason?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit to that, Dr. Anderson. You know, as I mentioned, we met with Representative Byrd, who chairs the Joint Budget Committee. And they were, I think, they were actually just about to meet that afternoon to discuss kind of mid-year budget projections. And the number that was thrown around was $24 million in additional funds for K-12 to address the newcomer students and help, help school districts provide some relief to be able to support those students. And so I don't know, you know, where things are exactly with that, but there was a real understanding of the need there. You know, I know we've had, I saw in News &amp; Notes, 607 students and 200 and something since October. Just to put that in perspective, I don't know the actual number of students, but there's an article in the New York Times about the impact in Denver and they've had 40,000 newcomer students, or 40,000 migrants. I don't know how many students that translates for DPS. But so when you think about a $24 million, you know, allocation of funds, obviously Denver is kind of ground zero for where that, the need is. And so I don't know what that means for Boulder, but you know, it's, those kind of, the conversations across the Capitol were about just the needs. It's affecting every district, rural, suburban, and urban, obviously Denver most prominently. So there was a real understanding of the need. I don't know that 24 million is sufficient, but, and I don't know if that's where things will end up, but that was the number that was talked about when we were there last week. Another bill I mentioned, and Nicole, you raised at our last meeting, was about the, essentially the book ban legislation that would put a process in place for challenging books. And I think a lot of other districts, Casby included, objected to that legislation, raised kind of practical, many of the practical and kind of logistical concerns that you raised a few weeks ago. So those have all been shared with the sponsors and other folks around that bill. I don't know the prospects for that, but I think at the very least, they have, they now have, maybe they didn't when they introduced it, but they now have, the sponsors have an understanding of how, what this means, you know, practically for school districts. So if, hopefully, if it moves forward, some of the concerns will be addressed, but I'm not sure. So yeah, and then just a few other, we had some conversations around a whole range of other bills on charter schools, on Narcan use, students being able to administer Narcan to other students. There was legislation that was introduced that was kind of the hot topic of the day there. So obviously lots of things in flux were midway through the session or they're midway through the session. But it was, yeah, lots of things worth following and exciting to be there. So thanks.
Thank you for attending that event, Jason. One bill I wanted to bring up, Board members, that we are supporting is Senate Bill 24-014, which is the Seal of Climate Literacy Diploma Endorsement, that would authorize districts or allow districts to grant a high school diploma endorsement if they can demonstrate mastery in climate literacy, attain green skills and technical green skills as well. I shared that information with our Green New Deal students ahead of the opportunity to provide testimony. And our lobbyists did offer to bring, if they wanted to give public testimony down at the Capitol, they offered to take them around and introduce them to members, the students, because it was a school day, we're not able to take them up on that opportunity. But they were also given information on how to, you know, write, write to the legislators and to share their thoughts on that one. So relevant to the work that, the resolution that we just passed and then the work we're doing in this district, so I wanted to bring that one to your attention. Oh, Kitty? Kitty, you're muted.
Sorry, my daughter just walked in. I had wanted to go to the legislative breakfast, but, I mean, not breakfast.
Kitty, you muted yourself again.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. A couple of things I wanted to say about some bills. The, Jason, you brought up the book ban bill. And it's, it's true that it creates this really cumbersome and laborious process. But the part I liked about it is it had good protections for public libraries and schools to not ban books. And I did like that piece of it. So I hope they're going to work on making that a little bit better. What else? Oh, yes, the Independent Ethics Commission jurisdiction. I'm curious if we know what the, you know, what the impact could be. Because reading the bill, I saw that penalty is double the value of a gift, if you got a gift. However, litigation fees could really build up. And so I'm, this is just wondering and I can ask, you know, I could talk to Rob later, is that something that would, that insurance would cover or not? So I'll ask that at another time unless somebody already knows. And that's all I have to say about legislative stuff.
Board members, any other questions or comments for legislative update? Okay, well, at this time, I would like to call a five-minute comfort break, if that's okay with the Board. Thanks. Thanks. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Uh, the next item on our agenda this evening, uh, is action items consent grouping. Eight point one personnel items, eight point two approval, approval of minutes, January 23rd, 2024, regular meeting. Eight point three acceptance of donation Crestview Elementary, eight point four academic fees for the 24, 25 school year, eight point five license renewal with advanced network management, eight point six architectural design and engineering service contract for Monarch High School. Eight point seven Angovine Middle School, Centaurus High School Extended Learning, Colorado Department of Education. Eight point eight Grant Columbine Elementary School Extended Learning, Colorado Department of Education. Eight point nine Grant Crestview Whittier University Hill Extended Learning, Colorado Department of Education. Eight point one zero Grant Justice High School Extended Learning, Colorado Department of Education. Are there any items board members would like to pull from this consent grouping? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the items in the consent grouping before we begin discussion. Motion by Jason, second by Jorge. Board members, is there any discussion on the consent grouping items? No. Lots of grants on here. Hope we get those. Uh, Laura, can you please call the rule on the consent grouping? Chavez.
Yes.
Medler.
Yes.
Niznick.
Yes.
Quinlan Awada.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Unger.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Board members, um, we do not have any action items on tonight's agenda, so we will move on to the policy items. We have three policies up for study this evening. Um, the first is Board Policy JC, School Attendance Areas. Kathleen, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. We did, I do have just a couple of slides just to help walk us through this process a little bit that were not part of your agenda item. So this is the graphic we've showed you before. These are definitely intersecting policies. So we will be taking the first bite tonight with JC, the Attendance Boundaries Policy, the Open Enrollment Policy and Regulation J E C C, and then the Schools of Choice Policy, which is I F F. So a couple of reminders, we've talked a little bit about the board's evolving policy stylebook. We will have both our grammatic and our word choice conventions as part of this stylebook. And there were a couple of things I just want to recap that the board has accomplished over the last several meetings. So the board will recall you adopted your revised board policy process and established that that policy itself, that umbrella, is really intended to establish the board's philosophy or central principles. Regulations specifically have the force of policy based on this board's work, but this tends to be where we place more detail so that we don't lose the philosophy of the policy, but we're able to have the level of detail that the board believes best serves the community. Number three, now this, this may be more of a Kathleen Sullivan approach to policy, but I'd like to encourage its adoption. So one of the things that I have found over the time I've been doing policy work in Colorado for the last 16 or 17 years is that when a board is really wrestling with a particular topic or a point of contention, you may see that point or that issue strung out in multiple different places in policy to make sure we don't miss it. The danger is that when you go into revised policies, it can be hard to find all of the tendrils when they're overly intertwined. So I really encourage us to think about presenting that essential content in the primary policy and then using the cross-references at the end of policy to help people see the other places they may want to look. And then the last item is just a reminder of things that we have talked about, um, eliminating gender pronouns, making sure we're using preferred terms like student, community member, and school district. With some reassurance to the board, when you do big work like you're doing tonight and you did on your B chapter policies, adopting 20 in one meeting, we will go in and make sure that if there are elements like, uh, board member Sergeant found a he, she, gender pronoun in the drafts, that we do correct those and capture those for the board. So with that in mind, we're going to talk about four tonight, but I want to highlight for you that there are several other related policies that we are going to be touching. So there will be a few things that we may be pulling out of policy, like references to transportation that were littered around, to centralize them in the transportation policy. So these are items that are currently in draft, but I'm not presenting to the board tonight. They need a little bit more work, but things will clean up over the next couple of meetings to go along with this work. Okay, so beginning then with Policy JC, um, and this first take at a red line is, we don't necessarily always do policy in the same order, but here we had a series of fall meetings where we talked about these topics and there was a significant amount of board discussion as well as staff input. Um, and so these red lines really tried to capture all of that input as well as the excellent input we received from the L RAC Council and from DAC's Policy Subcommittee. The board will note that the DAC's Policy Memo on Open Enrollment is attached to this agenda item and was adopted by DAC formally last week. All right, so JC, we start with a nice, easy one. This is the Attendance Boundaries Policy. We had, uh, codified this policy for our district in 2019, and before that it was really just an old version from 1978. I think the board noted there were some formatting problems with this policy. There's stuff over a line, under a line, under a note. So the main revisions that we did here was just bring everything together into the right format to establish at least a five-year review cycle to identify the process for and timing for changes by incorporating that language into the boundary modification discussion. And then rather than cementing into policy a particular solution when there may be attendance boundary changes, putting in language that makes sure that we remember we need to plan for those schools and families that are impacted in the event of a boundary change. So that's Red Line JC.
Board members, who would like to start?
Nicole, Kitty and I have had the, kind of the pleasure of, of looking at these policies kind of a couple of times, um, both before we turned over the board and now the new board. Um, and I just want to say I feel really proud of the work that we've done here. Um, it's a lot of very deliberate wordsmithing that has some pretty big implications. I think this one is relatively simple. You know, one of the biggest changes that jumps out for me, um, is the board shall review such areas at least every five years. We're naming that, to my knowledge, for the first time ever. We're creating a cadence and tempo, and it might be a little bit of a shock the first cou- first time or two, but I think once the community gets used to that kind of cadence and that opportunity to provide feedback, this is going to be a really helpful policy. So I just kind of want to start out, out of the gate saying how happy I am with this in general and like, thank you and thank all the board members for their hard work on this policy and all the staff.
Thanks. Kitty?
Thank you, Kathleen, and I'm happy to say I found hardly any issues and they were all pretty much just typo type things. But anyway, I'm glad we're doing this. I'm glad we're putting in a schedule so that we will continue to look at it. I had read an article, and I think it was in Education Week, about an AI program that a school district used to change the boundaries and their concerns were making sure that the schools were each as racially diverse as possible. And I don't think the article said what the program was or how expensive it was, but is that something we would consider doing?
I would say that as this policy is revised, um, you know, what our staff would do would be to, to, to kind of draw up, uh, how they would go about reviewing the, reviewing the attendance areas. I think that we would come up with a, a, um, kind of a rhythm, right? You know, and whether that started with, you know, bringing this to the public, to the board, to hear any board concerns or doing some type of constituent engagement. I'd have to learn more about the, the program, Kitty. I think that there's programs out there, um, that can help us do, do the work that we want to do more efficiently and effectively. I think that we're going to continue to learn about those as AI evolves. Um, and, uh, we, we'd always look to any product or any, um, solution that might help us do that better.
Of course. Yeah, it was just a thought and it was just a small blurb in the magazine.
Um, I just want to dito what Beth said. I'm, I think this looks great and will position us well in a good shape to move forward. On the, on the thought of as we move forward over five years and revisit this, um, I'm interested in technology too, but there's also some really good people who work with districts on these issues and it's, you know, folks like Brian Eschbacher, who's done a ton of work with, um, Denver and other districts around Colorado and nationally. And so when you, when you want to figure out how to achieve ends through your attendance boundaries, there are some people out there who have, that's, that's their, their jam. And we might want to think about taking advantage of them.
Jason?
Um, yeah, I agree with Beth and Alex's comments. Um, I wasn't here for previous versions of this, but excited to be part of this version. I, I thought about this when we discussed it at the last meeting or whenever that was. Um, and the word review, the board shall review such areas as at least every five years, is that too unclear? I don't know, do, do we need more specificity there on like what that means? Uh, I don't want to like lock us into something, but I worry that that could just be like, yeah, well, we reviewed it, we were moving on. I feel like we, the, the intent seems to be, you know, a real substantive review of boundaries and not necessarily just kind of a check the box. And I just a question, I don't know, I don't have any suggestions, but I just worry that that word might be not clear enough.
Kathleen? Rob?
Yeah, I, I'd suggest we leave it there, uh, for now. And then, um, I, I certainly understand, uh, the points you're making in regards to, uh, you know, the threshold to review could be, could be light touch, but I don't know that that's the spirit in which we're, we're, we're bringing this forward. Before knowing and understanding what process we'll use, how we'll do that, how we'll engage in community, I'd be hesitant to have something too prescriptive there. Um, but if the spirit of the, of the policy is in this whole spirit of declining enrollment and what we've said publicly around the ideas of that we need to review the attendance policy, re- review meaning look at where we might make some changes that might make sense to help with declining enrollment. But I don't know that this, the policy needs to get that specific, um, that, uh, but, but, you know, to, it's, it's at the board's pleasure in regards to how you want to handle that. That's how I interpret that. I think that that's how our staff would interpret that. Um, but I, but I hear, uh, hear the point which you're making.
Kathleen?
And I would obviously endorse what Dr. Anderson just said and agree. I think rev- review to me is an active word wherein other policies you'll see for the board, it's a report will be made to the board. Those are the items that I think are more passive and review really does for staff. This is a get ready, present good information and make sure you're ready for a very robust discussion.
Kitty?
Sorry. I want to say Kathleen said most of what I was thinking, but just to reiterate about reviews, the board never gets down in the weeds to actually do the work of reviewing it. We rely on staff for that and they present and like Kathleen said, we would have a robust discussion about that.
Um, I also wanted to just highlight the addition, additional language around needing to be considerate of the financial viability and, um, the board needing to be responsible fiscally with its resources of which buildings and capital assets are. So I like that addition as well. I concur with my fellow board members that this policy feels like it is in excellent shape. Any further feedback on this policy? High degree of alignment, which feels positive. Um, we will then move on to Board Policy J E C C, Assignment of Students to Schools, and J E C C R, Open Enrollment. Kathleen, back to you.
Those darn mics and the buttons, Kitty, I feel you. Um, so Board Policy J E C C, Assignment of Students to Schools, has, uh, not been touched in 22 years, so this is an exciting, exciting moment. Um, there are a few things that we did and I realized that originally I wrote this slide and said we consolidated and revised policy objectives. And I went, when I went back through again, I realized that we actually are proposing to incorporate those policy objectives into this policy for the first time. These were based on the board's discussion, but the bullet points you'll see there in that second paragraph, am I yelling into it? Thank you. Into that second paragraph, um, come from the board's discussion. The other piece that I want to point out that I think is really important is as we talk about issues of Title IX and bullying, working and learning conditions and equitable conditions in schools, there are times where we as a district need to make decisions about where students are enrolled to make sure that all kids are able to access their education. So we brought that language forward into this policy. The board will see it's at the bottom of page one, under that section of school assignment, where we talk about other than overcrowding or these other administrative placement or transfer provision, students would ordinarily be assigned to their neighborhood school. As is amazing and wonderful about this board, I did receive some comment from board members after the agenda and the red lines were made available. And whenever I can, I do want to make sure that I review those and can come to the board with some recommendations where it's important. I think that one of the things that we did was pull from J E C C dash R, the regulation where we had the language around the right of students with disabilities to have admission decisions made without consideration of disability status. So we brought those items forward into the policy and then Board Member Medler, um, shared the suggestion that rather than saying we're not going to ask about disability status, that we assure our families, we're not going to consider disability status. The difference is if they're already in BVSD, we know their child's disability status. So that language really wouldn't bring much assurance to a family that they're going to receive that non-discriminatory admissions process. So I think that's an important suggestion that I would move forward into that next draft. It's really just a language change there for J E C C. And then the other part of this policy on school choice, again, there were pieces of this that are in the CASB sample that are embodied in state law that we just didn't have. So those pieces were pulled in to give the bigger framework for school choice. And then also including the last item of this policy, J E C C, a discussion and a directive that we have data systems. this policy, J E C C, a discussion and a directive, that we have data systems that will consistently provide the school district with the information that's needed to make both good policy and practice decisions. So that is the basic summary of red lines that have been made to J E C C.
Thank you for that overview Kathleen. Board members, any questions or comments on this policy? On J E C C at this time? Alex?
Thank you, and thank you Kathleen, for that summary of the other change. I appreciate that. One thing I would think about is in the first set of bullets, on bullet number three, we say ensure equitable access to school choice opportunities. I'd be interested in adding a phrase there, something to the effect of ensure equitable access to school choice opportunities, and promote the representative student population in our schools that reflects the diversity of our community, or something to that effect. So it's more than just like making sure that access happens, but the full, like how we design our schools and programs, and the other stuff that contributes to it, also plays into whether our schools become representative of us as a community or not. So I think access alone doesn't capture what we want to have in the principle. That's why I would say get to the representative nature of our programming in schools.
Kitty?
Okay, unmuted. I have a question for Alex. What you suggested, what would that look like? I mean, I like the idea of it.
A change that's been made in state policy, which is done in order to comply with the Office for Civil Rights at the federal level, is to make sure that the enrollment decision is made without access to the information. The first part is to say, to let people know that you won't make a decision based on it. The second part is to not ask them about their disability status, so someone would disclose it. The guidance also clarifies that if the person does disclose it, you won't use it, and that if you already have the information, you won't use it. And then, once there, it separates admission to the student beginning to attend the school and get services there. So, once they're admitted, then you would have the IEP meeting if necessary, and then determine if the school could provide FAP. And then, some kids may be redirected based on the student's individual IEP, but they would know that the decision wouldn't have been based for the original admission on their disability, and it would be handled in the IEP. The one thing this change, the addition I'm proposing helps on, is that parents of kids with disabilities, myself included, as a parent of a child with a disability, they want to know, is this school going to be good for my kid? Are they interested and capable of serving my child? And so it makes a lot of sense during a choice exploration, that they seek out information, say, hey, my kid's like this, what happens to kids like this in your school? So you don't want to discourage the exchange of information, but you still want to make it clear to them that their admission isn't affected by what they shared with you during that exploration. That's what the addition would change. Does that help Kitty?
No, because I was referring to the part when you talked about making sure our schools, the diversity of our schools represent the diversity of the district. And I may have misunderstood what you said.
Thank you. I guess on that one, in terms of a principle, I think of access is a big part of open enrollment. But there's also the services that kids receive that are designed for them to succeed there. And so we could open up, we could improve our choice policies so that they look particularly equitable, and then still not have programming in the school that serves all the students in our community so that they would stay there. So you can end up having stuff that becomes, that ends up leading to stratification in the students, that we wouldn't have wanted our choice to generate, but we don't want the schools to generate it either, I guess would be the point. So, not only in the open enrollment and the design of our schools, we'd be thinking about not just making sure they're allowed to apply, but making sure we've made the schools so that they'd be successful for all our kids and be attractive to them.
Thank you. I understand that better now.
Jorge?
Thank you, Alex and Kitty, for that thoughtful discussion. I agree, I really appreciate you adding that priority about having our schools be representative of the whole district, right? It's not just access, but making sure that parents have the knowledge and the ability to actually take advantage of them. And, you know, I think for this policy, keeping it simple, having it at the forefront to kind of help drive our decision-making, this could be all our other policies. And I want to say thank you to the DAC recommendations that are not detail about what we should be doing, but how we should be prioritizing our decision-making, right? And so thinking about transportation, thinking about our tennis districts, thinking about programming across the district, and what it's going to look like, and including the long-range planning as a part of that. And so, the addition of the data at the end of this, I thought is great, so I really appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I think it's kind of taken shape nicely. Thank you.
Thanks for that discussion, board members. Around that third bullet, I like the brevity, I like that it's open, and leads one to think through the different types of students that we are going to try to provide access for. I think if we think about, I wouldn't want language that might cause us to try to mandate demographic populations at a school, so I'd be careful about, like, getting more granular on that language around access to these choices, and what they look like. I agree with Jorge that having that at the forefront is really helpful, really aligns with the DAC recommendations and the discussion this board. One comment I had, on the last sentence of the second paragraph on page two, on J E C C, I just wanted to clarify, all of our students are placed by a lottery, regardless of whether applications exceed space. So I would recommend striking that final sentence, or adjusting it to read that students participating in the open enrollment process will be offered seats available by means of random selection lottery. Just to really be clear that we will always have a lottery system because of our focus schools and because of our choice schools, it doesn't matter the number of students applying. So just clarifying that sentence was the change that I pulled out there. And I really like a lot of the pulling over the athletics, pulling over the FAP to this overarching policy, and really setting the tenor and the tone and the goals of this district, and what we're trying to accomplish in this big policy, as we work through regulation and different levers that need to be pulled or considered, as we have schools that need to be looked at, or focus programs that need to be looked at in the future.
Alex?
On the third bullet, I think what I proposed, and you don't have it written in front of you, but it's not, I didn't propose that we use the language of ensure for both the access and the representation, because I don't think we can ensure it. So what I suggested was ensure equitable access to school choice opportunities, and promote the representative student populations in our schools that reflects our community. So I totally recognize that we can't make that happen, there was nothing we could do in policy, and it's really tricky.
Board members, other comments on J E C C? Catherine, do you feel, Kathleen, do you feel like you have good direction? Oh, sorry.
Well, I would like to clarify, if we use promote instead of ensure, are people okay with that sort of change to the third bullet? Is that, any objections to that?
I guess I would leave that up to Kathleen to look at in further detail, and whether it aligns with some of our other language. It would be my preference, and come back to us with something. Because we can't vote today as a study item, so I just want to make sure we're not getting to a vote. Rob?
So, we're not, my hope is that after today's work session, that there's real clarity around what's coming back to everybody, because on the 27th, as a reminder, is when we're bringing the enrollment presentation as well. And so these should be ready to go, right? So, for Kathleen, if we hear, this is the challenge, right? We want to make sure that we are responding to the will of the board. You know, if we hear one member give us some suggestions, which is great, as long as there's a nod of heads, right? But if there's some conflicting, like if one member says one thing, another says another thing, it's hard for Kathleen to decide how to kind of work through that. So, even if we take a couple of extra minutes from folks, you know, folks who haven't weighed in, especially on like items where, like I heard you say Nicole, brevity, I heard Alex promote a different statement, I heard Jorge support what Alex shared. I just, we don't, we want these things clean only because of the connection to the 27th. So I'd ask for a little more dialogue until we make sure that we have consensus, or a majority of opinions leaning us in one way or the other.
Beth, and then Alenia? I guess I just wanted to have Alex clarify one more time his proposed statement.
So, on the third bullet, I would have it say, ensure equitable access to school choice opportunities, and promote the representative student populations in our schools that reflects the diversity of our community.
I think I support that. I think it's fine. I appreciate the point of brevity, but I also feel like it does capture something else. And thinking back on all the information that DAC gave us around this topic, I think promote feels right, without locking us into too much, too many requirements. So I feel good about that.
I also feel good about it.
Let the record show Kitty's thumb.
Yeah, I agree with those recommendations.
I still prefer brevity, but we will move on to J E C C R. Thanks.
There's another proposed addition I have, but I don't know if this goes in J E C C or in J E C C R. So I'd like Kathleen's advice on that one. And that is the one about the right of return to a neighborhood school. I've recommended it for both. Do you think that's for R?
That is for R. So let's let Kathleen present J E C C R.
Thank you. I do, that would be my recommendation, is that we talk about it here. So that's great. I love it when it all comes together. So J E C C dash R, this is going to be a real gift to our community when we give this thing a serious haircut. Just to pick up on what we talked about earlier today, I'm not sure if you realize, you also cut the fees list from like 18 pages to one, on your consent agenda, so well done, based on policy work from just a few months ago. So J E C C dash R, so what the board will notice here is that the red lines, which look a little bit like a bloodbath, which is why you got clean copies too, is that we're really proposing that we take this back to the right view, so that every time we have a technology change, or some small logistic, we don't wind up having to overhaul the entire regulation. So in restructuring it, I took out all of the detail, what date would it be due, when, who does what to whom, and all of those, and really tried to capture the DAC's recommendations around what are the most important pieces of this. We want to know what the timing is, we want to make sure that we've got that information available to our community appropriately, and just really dramatically reduce the volume here. The board will also notice that after the board's discussion at the last meeting about where some of the geographic preferences came from in conversations with our team, it seems that that really is not something that is leveraged with any frequency in open enrollment. So, this red line strikes all of those geographic and non-charter school specific preferences. It's a starting point. There's obviously a lot there the board can discuss. We also simplified the employee preference. I think when you looked across the district's preferences, and then you look at charter preferences, we were getting into highly fractionated people. It was hard to understand where that number really even came from. So just dramatically simplified in this red line. And then, the final piece, clarifying charter school preferences. I think we had a pretty good conversation at the last meeting about the fact that some of the charter school preferences are tied to their contract. So if we were to have a significant disagreement with the charter school about what to do with preferences, say today and tomorrow, our best leverage would be at the contract renewal. But it doesn't mean that that's the only time. And I certainly have heard every board since I've been in this district have concerns about the equity of those charter preferences. The original thought that I had was just a little paragraph to preface those preferences, and then leaving them in place. After some additional conversation with Board Member Medler, I do, I do see utility in actually striking them out of the regulation at this point, knowing that we would have to visit them in charter negotiations if they didn't agree to immediately adopt the district preferences. But it does leave us with a much shorter, simpler, more straightforward policy regulation that I think would be easier for our families and community members to understand. So those are the big overview of the changes to J E C C dash R. As Board Member Medler signaled, there was some conversation at the last meeting about, could kids who've choiced out of their neighborhood school come back to their neighborhood school without going through the open enrollment process? I wasn't sure where that landed. I didn't attempt to put that into the red line at this point, but you'll see that those kids are currently captured under preference four for the district. So if that was going to be something to be addressed by the board, then I would do it in the context of those preferences.
Kathleen, may I ask a point of clarification? So, based on your recommendation about the charter language that is not reflected in the documents that we have, would you remove all of that language, or would you still leave a paragraph about charter school preferences, and how they will be negotiated in charter school contract, period? So, I feel like they need to be addressed somewhere to signal to our community. I just was not clear, based on your description, how, where that would look, or how that would look.
At this point, based on the discussion we've had, my recommendation would be a paragraph that explains, back to our policy style book, this is the board's philosophy when it comes to charter school preferences. So it would be a short paragraph, something like we have now, that's very clear that this board would not support preferences that it considers to be inequitable.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, Kathleen, thanks for capturing this. I really appreciate the conversation we had at a previous meeting about this, and I think your paragraph here really summarizes that, and kind of the goal. And, you know, and I would agree, if that was Alex's recommendation to, I think keeping the language in here with the charter school preferences as they exist is very confusing. And so I think a clarifying paragraph about, you know, what our goals are, you know, what we hope to eliminate. You know, there was something in the DAC memo about, I forget the quote, but, you know, choice when unregulated and poorly designed works to exacerbate inequality and preserve advantage. And I think about that when I read these preferences. And I think we want to, you know, all of our other policies are kind of pointing the other direction of, you know, addressing, or, you know, not having unregulated choice, and really being thoughtful about how we design these, these choice options. And so I think, you know, as you have with the paragraph, it makes a lot of sense, and getting rid of the charter school language, I would really strongly support that as well.
Beth?
I basically want to say ditto. I was going to say the same thing. I feel like this makes a lot of sense for simplicity, for our community. Having all this charter school information here doesn't really track. So, I think that sounds great.
Kitty?
So I have a question. Kathleen, did you say that a charter school could choose to adopt our open enrollment policy if they wanted to before contract negotiations?
Yes, I believe they could.
But they don't have to.
I think, as any good lawyer would, Board Member Sergeant, I would reserve my ability to make money- It would probably depend on exactly the language that we were talking about. So I haven't yet had any conversations with our charters that still have preferences that aren't aligned with the districts. So I don't know what their responses would be, but I certainly have heard from this board that once this policy and regulation is finalized, we'll need to initiate that conversation with our charters right away. I think timing of the year, we are in February. So at this point, we would be talking about changes that would apply to next year's lottery.
Thank you. Because one question I was going to ask is, you know, do you have a sense of what the charters are thinking? So you're not, so you're suggesting we immediately renegotiate the, the selection process for charters even if their contract is not up? Is that right?
Yes. And that's, that's in large part because I believe that's direction that's been clear from the board, Board Member Sergeant, for the last several years that we've been really looking at J E C C dash R.
And I agree with the others that having the charter schools items in there can be a bit confusing, but until their preferences change, it would be good to have some kind of cross-reference to where somebody who wanted to know what the procedure was or the preferences were for charter schools could easily find it.
Jason and then Alex.
Just kind of on that point, the, the language says V V S D intends for charter school admission criteria to be incorporated. And I don't, you know, short of requires, I don't know if there's a stronger legal word, but that seems pretty clear in intent. And yeah, so I, I don't, I don't have a better word. I think that that is pretty clear there about what we expect of the charter schools.
Yeah, I would just like to, I want to clarify something. I, I totally support Boulder Valley's great charter schools, and I know there's wonderful people in all of them with whom we could negotiate about our goals and intentions. And I, I really don't think we need to frame this in any adversarial way at all. I think we just talk about the principles of our community and enter into that negotiation. I will say, one, one point that is good to know is that in the same way a charter applicant can appeal being denied, or a charter school can appeal to the state board when they're non-renewed, a charter school can appeal to the state board if there's a unilateral condition put into a charter contract. So our policies, in order to have the strongest standing, ironically, should be to direct the staff to negotiate on behalf of our principals rather than to say the charter school is required in its contract to do X, because then we have foreclosed the opportunity to negotiate. But when we negotiate, we can negotiate as strongly as we want, and this policy will give us the ability to negotiate with the strongest hand.
Along the conversation about the charter schools, I feel like this is something, removal of this language is something that I've been asking for, for a long time. And I think it's also important to make clear that we've removed the names of all schools from this policy. We no longer call it any school type or by name at all. And so removing this language for specific charters and calling those out by name would be aligned with that principle as well. So as focus strands and focus programs change, might, you know, evolve or change or what have you, not having school names in this policy, I think is a strength. And we can provide some of that extra detail to Kitty, do what she was saying, or let folks know what those schools might be on our website and on the information that we're going to really be proactively providing our community in a different way based on recommendations and board policy J E C C. So I think there's a bunch of ways to look at taking that language out. I think it's a really positive addition. Similar to my comment on J E C C, on J E C C R, the last paragraph on page one refers to if there's a lottery. And so I would just again, strike that and or simplify it to say that, you know, the open enrollment lottery shall incorporate the following preferences. So that little cleanup there for consistency and so the public knows that we will always have that lottery, I think is really important. This policy used to be seven pages or so. The removal of the charter school language will bring this down to two pages. Our public will be better informed. They will understand what is going on with the clarity of this new policy. And I, I really commend the work of this board, the work of the previous board, the work of the DAC to provide some direction for us and for our community that upholds our values, sends, sends the message of what we hope to accomplish and doesn't overcomplicate it. Open enrollment should not be overly complicated, and this is a really good first step to ensuring that is the reality for our families. So changes that have been made here, I just wholeheartedly agree with and am really excited for.
Lelania?
If we're okay on the charter piece, I would like to talk about number four students wishing to return to their designated neighborhood school. I'm of the opinion that I would not like that to be number four. I don't even know if I want it to be in there. I think if you want to return to your neighborhood school, that's something, given the current state of enrollment, that we should, you know, we, we want to give people choice, but that is still giving people choice if they choose to come back to their neighborhood school. And I think that could easily happen. So anyway, that's my opinion on number four.
So I have a wondering about that. There are not very many schools that we have that are at or near capacity, but there are some. And so by not having that be a preference and not having to have our students go through a process to get back in, what might that mean for those schools that are at or near capacity? So before I would make a directive, I would want to understand that. And if that's the reason why this is a choice in here somewhere, a preference in here somewhere.
I don't, you, you could potentially have to add staff. You'd pay for the seat twice, right? So when, when, if you, if you staff the school to handle the students coming in through choice, right, you pay for that seat, right, through a staff member. And then if you allow folks to go back to their home school, in some instances, it's no big deal, right? If their, if their class size is under capacity, if, if there's room, if you have the rounds, then they move over. That's not a problem. Now, if the teacher, say you have one teacher who has 31 kids, right, and you move two kids in, 33, then it's probably $125,000 to split that class up into two. Now, we do budget for that within our instructional reserve as folks move around, right? So the intent probably was, was in a different time and a difference, like, you know, our schools were bursting at the seams, you know, potentially. You know, the, I wouldn't know the impact, financial impact of that until you did it and that we could try to track it. And it could be not a big deal or could be, you know, depending upon the number of folks who were at a school and wanted to come back. So there would, there potentially could be a financial implication, but that, you know, this is, if this is the direction of the board, we would just have to track it and know and understand what that would look like. And like, I don't know, I don't know that we have a way to track. We don't know the, the impact because folks don't even see it as an option today, right? So, so we would have to just track that. But there could be some staffing implications.
So I think that'd be interesting, and then I know Kitty has her hand up, only because anecdotally, when my kids were both at Foothill, the number of folks in both of their grades that decided to leave to go check out Horizons and High Peaks and then came back the following year, every single one of them got their spots back through the open enrollment process. And so.
You're not talking mid-year, you're talking the following year.
The following year.
Okay, all right. So we're talking about two separate things. So the following year, if we knew that they were, they were, if we knew that they were coming, that would be one thing. If we didn't know they were coming and they showed up after the fact, it would just be, it would be like we would handle when kids don't register and enroll until the first day of school, right? And that happens.
Oh, so then that wouldn't even be, so it's, it's two different things. One is an open enrollment point and one is a whenever point of, of this policy. So it's.
Yeah, two scenarios. I go to High Peaks, I'm there for a couple of months, I don't like it, I want to come back to my school. That could potentially be an unplanned staffing situation, right? I go to High Peaks, the next year, I don't want to go to High Peaks, I want to go to my neighborhood school. If we know that the child is going into their neighborhood school as a, as a preference, right, then we would know for sure and then they would accept it. And if you don't put it in as a preference, then you would never know if they were showing back up. I don't know how you would know.
So two slightly different things. Okay.
I'm looking at our staff because, because I'm, I'm guessing I have that right. Robin, do I have that, that right? Do you want to come up to the podium and maybe kind of help us out a little bit?
Kitty, while Robin's coming up to the podium, would you, would you like to ask your question?
Yes, part of it got clarified. I, first of all, I didn't realize that we were ever discussing a student at any time during the school year can go back, you know, should be able to go back to their neighborhood school. So that's one. And my understanding of this regulation is going back the following or any subsequent school year. And then I also, I'm confused, Lelania, about what your opinion was, because I heard you say you didn't want it as a preference. So does that mean you didn't, you don't want them to be able to open and roll back? Or, yeah, I just want to make sure I understand what your opinion on that is.
Sorry, it was confusing, Kitty. Anytime a student wishes to return to their neighborhood school, I would like to see people have that option. I understand the concern about staffing. So maybe it's not possible. And maybe it could move to a different position on this list. I, I do think it's important, as we see kids homeschooling and going to private school, that I would like to incent them or make it easy for them to come back to their neighborhood school, which holds a lot of wonderful incentives about busing and being with the neighborhood kids. And I would like to.
Who has open enrolled out of the district could decide they want to go to their home school the same way a student who moved in in the middle of the year could do that. Is that right, Rob? Or am I wrong about that?
Nope, that's correct.
Okay. So for the situations, Lelania, you were describing, there would be no barrier to those students coming back to B V S D, to their home school. And I, so that was, yeah, okay.
Robin?
Yes. So first, in reference to thinking about during the school year transfers of enrollment from one school to another, that is, as a general rule, handled through our administrative transfer process. That is defined as due to extenuating circumstances. However, if a family is going to change their student's enrollment during the, the school year, that does qualify as an extenuating circumstance. And so that is a decision based on staffing and based on space availability. So if a family were to apply then through the open enrollment process as a preference to return to their neighborhood school in a subsequent year, that is at a certain level also dictated by space available, because there are sometimes schools that don't have much if any availability for increased enrollment due to open enrollment. I, plat choice is one example that very often is at its maximum student enrollment per, you know, per grade level. And sometimes, for example, it could be that the maximum number of students that we have in eighth grade, for example, are already present and are matriculating up from seventh grade to eighth grade. So there wouldn't necessarily be space in eighth grade for a student through the open enrollment process to return to their neighborhood school. Now, choice obviously is, is a choice program. However, what I can say is that those cases are rare and far in between. A recent example on a broader scale that we had is in the pandemic, families were provided with the opportunity to choose Boulder Universal if they wanted during the entirety or part of the pandemic to enroll their child in an online experience as opposed to in a brick and mortar experience. And we made the commitment as a system to those families that if they wanted to return at any time after a short period of time or post-pandemic or at any time to return to their neighborhood school, that we would accommodate those preferences. And a number of students, the majority of the students that initially enrolled there were initially enrolled at, but you did return to their neighborhood school and we were able to accommodate all of them.
So this gets a little bit to the entangling of policies that Kathleen laid out in the very beginning, because we do have a policy on administrative transfer. So thinking through that a little bit as well. Kitty and then Alex.
So Robin, I want to make sure I understood what you said, that it, it sounded like you said that if a parent in the middle of the year wants their student who is open enrolled somewhere to go back to their home school and they threaten to go outside B V S D, that that would be an extenuating circumstance and would, the child would be eligible for an administrative transfer?
No, partially. In, if a family applies for an administrative transfer from one school to another during the, during the school year, we do our very best to accommodate those students and those families. So, and almost so many, a very high percentage of those we are able to accommodate. So it wouldn't be dependent on whether or not they were considering, considering an out of district choice for their child. It would be dependent upon space available and the ability of the school that they would like to return their child to, to accommodate them with their current staffing.
Thank you. That cleared that up.
Robin, I might have a question for you too. How many students move into our district after October and how, what's our rate of student mobility district wide?
That's a great question. So I am very happy to get the exact data for you. We have a number of students that do come to us after October count and a number of students that, that leave. However, overall enrollment fluctuations are really minimal in our district compared to, compared to other districts across the state.
So let me clarify what, what I'm thinking, what I'd like to facilitate, and this is based on actual experience when I was at community Montessori. And people would enroll at community Montessori and their three-year-old, four-year-old experience might be okay, and then they figure out that the Montessori thing is not working for their kid. And they're like, okay, I want to get back into Table Mesa or whatever neighborhood school. And at that point, those parents were told, no, they'd had to do it through the open enrollment process back into like Bear Creek, which was oversubscribed at the time. So the indignity to me was someone who's been in one of our choice and focus schools is not able to get into their neighborhood school while somebody else who's been enrolled in private preschool actually has preference ahead of them because they don't have to open and roll. So what I'm trying to push for is that at least for the next year, the students who have exercised choice don't participate through open enrollment, they just enroll through the same process. So we're not talking about a preference, we're just talking about the right to enroll for the next year. And then a second issue is that mid-year transfer, and I'm, I'm hoping that we could accommodate that as much as possible, but to Superintendent's point, you know, staffing could be hard and we should treat it with the same ways we do the administrative transfers. The other thing I want to raise, this will be the, I wish, this is a second conversation, but I think this conversation is much more important as we continue to do preschool, because we're going to have preschool programs that expand, not everywhere, but we're going to have the expectation that they go from the preschool into the kindergarten and then we'll, we'll have to have the same discussion about preschool students and their access to their neighborhood school for kindergarten. neighborhood school for kindergarten.
You bring up a number of good points. And it the circumstance that you referenced in in it with your own child and and enrollment at Community Montessori, you are right. In the past, either prior to declining enrollment or in the very earliest stages of declining enrollment, that often was the situation that when a family wanted to return to their neighborhood school or to any other school for that matter, that space was at a premium and very often schools were not able to accommodate midyear transfers. That is much less of of a situation now.
Sure.
Yeah, just to be, it wasn't my child, it was a friend's child. But to be clear, the advice they got at the time was two pieces of advice. Well, just go enroll in a private school for six months and then come back and you'll be able to get in. Ironically, that that's where it was so perverse. And the other one was, well, why don't you just contact your school board member and they'll make sure this happens for you? So either way, I just want to make sure our policy is not as arbitrary or as discouraging of choice as it was in fifteen years ago.
Rob?
So obviously, the scenario you're that you're talking about doesn't feel right, right? Like to 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 be able to enroll in your neighborhood school, you have to jump through hoops that some can and others can't, right? Like, that's that's certainly an equity issue that that we had that I can understand. I guess the question I would have is, for us, it's just important to know where kids are going to school and not going to school. Right? So to the extent that to the extent that if a fam if 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 we kept it as a preference and the number one preference, the downside would be that if they're not taking open enrollment, then they couldn't get the seat. The benefit of that is that we know then where they're going and where they're not going, right? Because if 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 a parent doesn't tell us that they're taking their kid out of Community Montessori, but they very much know and they're going to go to their neighborhood school, when we allocate the FTE for the neighborhood school, we don't allocate for the kids that aren't going to be there that we don't know yet, right? But we would allocate for the school that we think they're going to stay at, but we don't know that they're leaving. All right? So there's a little some logistical challenges around, A, not letting it get in the way, right? And if you if you if there, I'm sure there's a way, if we thought about it, you could bump it up to number one and make a statement to saying that, you know, that guaranteed admission or something along those lines. But for for me, I'm just thinking, Robin, just the logistics of being able to staff our schools appropriately. Because today, when we staff our schools in March, we never take staff away if kids don't show up. I say that today because that may not always be the case. It's a luxury to be able to do that. Most school districts that I know of, that I've worked in, on the 10th day of school, if you have too many staff, you take the places where there's too many staff and you put them at the places where they're not, there's not enough staff. And what we do is just we add more staff temporarily. Right? We don't want to disturb any classes. We don't want to disturb any learning that's happening. Right? So I think that that's the logistics. I understand what you're trying to say, which is, right? Like, if you want to go to your neighborhood school, nothing should get in the way of that. It doesn't matter, which we could do. We would just have to know. I would just wouldn't. I'd pay for it once. I just wouldn't want to have to pay for it twice if there was a way that we could prevent the signaling around that, right? Because otherwise, we're going to overstaff somewhere and understaff somewhere and then we don't have a good way to sort that out.
I have one question related to the last comment. We have a section in this policy about preschool, saying that pre do the complexities of Colorado law, preschool assignments shall not be subject to open enrollment procedures. The example you're referencing is a preschool to elementary. And I just wonder if there is a way to maybe make that one sentence stronger. And I mean, some of our students with a pre-K open enrollment process, they they don't even get to choose what school they end up. And so I wonder if some of what we're after can be cleared up in that sentence about preschools. Like preschoolers going into elementary school or starting fresh. I, you know, that I just think that that's an opportunity. And because we have so little control over preschool enrollment right now that I wouldn't, I would want to hold those folks harmless for wherever they end up at preschool. And I think that that might be a place to address that part of the concern. Kathleen, if you feel like that language could be beefed up. Lelania, you had your hand up. And then Kitty, I do see your hand up.
I understand, Rob, what you're saying about that we have to know where they're going to be. And if and I was just going over in my head, what happens if you put it as the first preference? It's it would put people going into their neighborhood school ahead of people who've moved away but want to remain, sibling, and then eligible employee. It's not a, I I don't think it probably is a lot of people. But what I think it signals is we want you to go to your neighborhood school if you want to. But you have to go through open enrollment just because you left, right? That's all it's saying. But it's signaling not you're fourth in line.
If you moved it to number one and said something along the lines of students returning to their neighborhood school will be guaranteed admission, right? Like, you you would make it a clear statement, but we'd want them to declare that they were doing it so we knew ahead of time. Right? Like, like, that's the trick. Because if we don't know, and this is what happens with kindergarten, right? Like, we think we're going to have a bunch of kindergarten kids, then a bunch of kids show up and you never knew that they were going to show up because you've been trying to round the kids up. They actually literally call kindergarten roundup. We try to round the kids up. And 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 so if you know, and parents know, I mean, then as long as they go through the process and there's a clear process that everybody has access to and for any situation. I mean, the only challenge would be is if in March or April, right, you realize, gosh, this isn't for me. Now I want to make the decision. And then that would be, this wouldn't capture that as opposed to if you had no, if you had no deadline or no notification, right? The variability of where we put staff, because you have to put, you know, we're already hearing that we need to get staffing out quicker to school so folks can hire because the markets are getting more competitive, which means we have to do our enrollment projections earlier, right? So, you know, we're making enrollment projections in February and then if in April, May, folks are deciding, then they let us know in June or July. You would just have to absorb the variability and it would be difficult to project that what that would be, which would create variability in the amount of one-time dollars that we'd have to spend to cover it. But I do think that you could direct direct a preference where it's a, if you're on time in district in your neighborhood school and you want to go back, there's nobody more important than you being able to go back to your neighborhood school. If that's that would be the will of the board, you that's how I would I would suggest that we would move forward to do that.
So I just want for the record to say that I will have a high degree of heartburn if a family that has to move out of their neighborhood school because they can no longer afford rent or because their parents got divorced. Get trumped because we're mandating somebody that made a bad choice gets a spot. Like, that gives me heartburn. So I just, for the record, putting that as a number one guarantee, I think there are consequences and we will, I think, all of our students, I want all of our students to attend our neighborhood schools and I want to do whatever we can to ensure that is a viable option. And, you know, when we move these things around, we no matter what we do, there will be unintended consequences. There'll be some really great gains that we're really hoping for, but there will be some unintended consequences. And I just am a little bit worried, particularly with the rising rates of rent, the rising housing costs, the reality of divorce and shifting family structures, death of a parent needing to move in with somebody else, school stability for a student is priceless. And like, if there's something that I could protect, that would be the thing that I'm going to protect is that stability for that student who is going through challenging times. So I just wanted to add that as we consider making that a number one guarantee before I turn it over to Alex.
I just want to absolutely support your sentiment there. That's why I would also suggest that once a student's enrolled in one of our schools, that they not have to open enroll to remain enrolled through the rest of the grades of that school. And that would be another thing to take out of the open enrollment process and just say, regardless of where you live for the next four years, this is your school to a second grader, you know? And then, again, that's another thing you don't do with open enrollment and you keep your enrollment and that's what we want to keep our kids in our schools so we don't have to have declining enrollment. And then they're not set off against each other, but they're both people, the one who's in the school is entitled to stay and the other one can also return.
I feel like that was a point that I brought up at the last discussion extensively about putting on the ADU, but it wasn't included. So I just assumed that there was a rationale for why that wasn't included. But if there is or is not, now would be the time to know about guaranteed admission for. Yeah, for families that are in a school. I had suggested the last board meeting that we make it an ADU update if they move, but they can stay, choose to stay if they don't want to stay. It wasn't adopted, which I just assumed there was a good wise reason. And if there is, for the way our systems work or knowing where students are, I'd be happy to engage about whether that should be a preference or not. But I was leaving that up to district staff for some guidance. And then, sorry, Rob and then Kitty. Kitty, then Rob.
Okay. Nicole, I agree with you in terms of a kid who has to move for unfortunate circumstances. We certainly, I would not want to traumatize that child again either by having them move. That happened to me. But fortunately, my ex-husband lived in the attendance area of her school, so we just switched her address. I didn't have to do anything, but we might have had to. Question about preschool. So the sorting hat tells where kids where they're going to preschool. Is that right?
Yes. And we're all tuckling at the sorting hat reference. Yes, it's not the school district that decides that.
So a child finished, so a child goes to preschool in a school that is not their neighborhood school. Does that child have to open enroll to go to kindergarten in their neighborhood school?
No, at the at this point, the preschool location, open enrollment starts at kinder, right? There's no element of open enrollment either going into preschool or coming out of preschool. It doesn't.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. So a kid can go to their kindergarten in the school in their attendance area regardless of what they've done in preschool. Yeah, and I could support the coming back to your school as, you know, maybe move it up on the priorities because, you know, I understand that. And Alex, I understand it more this time when you talked about it, when you gave the example than I did before. So I appreciate your position. But I I agree with Nicole. I would not want to put it ahead of a kid who has had to move in the middle of a school year.
Dr. Anderson?
You could just put both groups of kids in the same tier. Right? You don't have to have one and two. It can be one, which is this or this, and that's one, if if there is heartburn around that piece. If if the if the feeling is regardless of this, of the of the of the situation, we feel like these things should always be true as part of our policy. And then to the extent that as long as we, as long as we know that that's happening, that would help us consider the staffing implications. And just like moving in sometimes makes staffing bump up a little bit, this might make, it would just be part of the equation. But there isn't any reason you'd have to pick one over the other. I think you could put them both in the tier. But I would say that for both, it's good to know. It'll help us plan. It'll help us staff more efficiently. It'll help us make sure that we're not under or overstaffing to the extent that we can can predict some things. And I'm looking at Robin. I mean, that makes sense, right? Like, if you just put them both in the same tier.
Yes, absolutely. There's no reason in my mind at this point that that wouldn't work.
Beth and Jason, then Alex.
You know, my my feelings on this are largely unchanged. I support keeping it. I support moving it up. My main contribution to this, I've heard a lot of great points, is that I think we should add a sentence for the the community that says something like, students wishing to return their designated neighborhood school with space available. Just a, hey, heads up, you can take your kid out, put your kid at Horizons or whatever. You want to bring your kid back to the home school? It might be Creekside. Creekside might not be available. Just a warning, just be aware of that. And it's simple, right?
Just a maybe a suggestion, maybe I'm missing something, but would it would it clarify this whole process and, you know, address the notice if in the opening sentence, we, I mean, to me, open enrollment is clear, it's for the next school year, but maybe that is not clear here. And so we say something like, the open enrollment lottery process for the coming school year shall incorporate. And then it seems to address the advanced notification issue. I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm missing something, but it seems like that would provide clarity there. And then however we decide to preference it, but at least we're not talking about midyear kids. We're talking about like planning and, you know, in a, like, for the very next school year. Is that is that all that's needed, maybe?
I think that that clarifies it, but I do think that the the question at hand that that the board is wrestling with right now is if you if you choice out of a school and the next year you just want to go to your neighborhood school, right? Should that, should you have to, should that be dependent upon space available or dependent on a lottery? Or should that be a guarantee? Right? So and then should that guarantee be more or less or the same guarantee as a family who's in the school and then for unforeseen circumstances has to move out of the school district? So, you know, if those two things are incredibly important to the board and then those two things are the most important things to solve in open enrollment, then you would put them at the very top and you would say that these students, right, are, you know, basically guaranteed enrollment, right? And when you say one, you've never guaranteed enrollment before, except for the kid who is already at the school because they never get disenrolled, right? They always stay. But who hasn't always been able to get back in is the kid who lives in the neighborhood, tries a choice program, realizes that their neighbor, they miss their neighborhood school, something happens. And and sometimes those kids don't get back into their neighborhood school, as with Alex's example.
Alex, then Kitty.
Yeah, I guess to Beth's scenario, that's what I'm trying to fix. That's the current status quo. Basically, you're in open enrollment. If there's room, you can come back. I'm trying to say, treat them like, I guess the language I would use, which I shared with Kathleen, is students that open enrolled in a school other than the school assigned to them according to their attendance area in which they live, may return to that school in the following school year without using open enrollment process on the same basis of other students residing in the attendance area for that school. And so there you have put them on equal footing, but you are guaranteeing them. Now, the proposal to say, take the both into the same tier, but guarantee them, that, for me, that achieves the same thing. And then you just have to deal with it, like you say, the same way you would families that move in or families that were in private schools and say, we now want to show up. And that's, I'm just trying to put them on equal footing while also maintaining continuity of instruction for the kids who are there who have life changes.
Rob, then Kitty.
The one difference being that you got to know by January 6th that that's what you want to do. And that if you decide between January 6th and the end of the school year, that's based solely on availability in the school. But that also allows us to staff appropriately based on what we know, which to me is the problem I'm really trying to solve for because we, you know, these, the, you know, teachers come in $125,000. Every one is $125,000, right? So if you get it off by 10, right, that's a million dollars, no more. And so to be able to know and understand where things are, I think, is just from an operational standpoint, will allow us to to manage class sizes, to do all the things that we try to do as we allocate staff.
Kitty.
So is, do we have a problem with parents not understanding or making themselves aware of the open enrollment policies? I mean, is it a, do we have parents who just want to show up at school because, like, say, in Alex's example, or they were in private, no, not private school, but just not go to their open enroll school and just show up in the fall at their neighborhood school?
I think it depends, Kitty. I mean, I'm sure there's all kinds of folks who show up at all kinds of schools and don't know the rules and aren't familiar with it. know the rules and aren't familiar with it, with the U.S. education system. Forget the Boulder Valley education system. I do think that some of that, you know, is, is, is true. I think that if you, if, if you make an adjustment, if it's, if it's the will of the board to say, "Coming back to your neighborhood school shouldn't, should be a guarantee," right? I would say you should, you shift that in the same tier as number one is now. And then if you do that and you say something like guaranteed admission, if, if on time, if, if you're on time and in district, as opposed, unless you move out of district, then that would be the way to solve the problem that you're, that you're thinking about. The implications of that, I don't know, I don't know how many folks would take advantage of that. You could shift, you could shift staffing potentially. What you could do is, and, and if you also did that, then you, then the, the, the choice program would know how much room they had too, right? So they could fill to it. So I think you can solve a lot of the problems and issues and it's just a, it's just a, it's just a change, it's just a, a preference change. And, and, you know, you could do it for a year and then see what happens. And then it's one-time money versus recurring money. If, if, you know, something goes haywire, I don't, I don't see how it would though.
Yeah, and what I was thinking when I asked that question is these parents by definition have been through the open enrollment process. Those are the parents I'm talking about. So are we do, I'm just wondering if we are communicating to our parents as clearly as possible what the policy is, so they're not confused.
Dr. Anderson?
I think what makes it confusing, Kitty, is that in a lot of places in not Boulder Valley, right, you always have a seat at your neighborhood school. Now, maybe not so in Colorado. Everywhere else I've ever been across the country, if you go, and it's, it's true if you choose a private school, or it's true if you choose a, an out-of-district choice school, right? And if you choose something outside of the realm of the district and you don't want to go there, right? If a kid chooses to go to Jeffco or to Adams 12 and that doesn't work out, they just come back to enroll in their neighborhood school because they're a new student. And so there's an inconsistency with the choice that people, like, like there's choices that people can make where this works for it, and then there's other choices that it doesn't work for it, and those other choices happen to be our choices. So there's, there's just an inconsistency there that could be confusing.
Thank you.
So how the current system works and how our new policy language, what it articulates is that a family, once they apply, receive a spot, they have 10 days to notify the district if they're going to take that spot or not. If we're now saying that you can notify us, but it doesn't mean a whole lot, I, I'm worried about the, the financial implication of like, what if it's not one student that kind of tips over? The cost of staff is real. I'm also worried about then the choice seat that becomes, that, that occurs after we've shut down our waitlist, because our policy also talks about when seats, waitlists will no longer be honored. And so a student leaves three weeks in and that, like a new student, because we're into the start of the school year, that vacancy may not be filled. It may not be filled by a student that isn't with us that we could have had otherwise, that is nowhere in our district. So the implications of that. And then again, I keep coming back to the implications of our administrative transfer policy and how that relates here. I don't want to overcomplicate this policy in a way that is offsetting the, the preferences in a way that's working against the process and the timeline we've identified, that is working against our administrative transfer policy. I really want to make sure that it all coordinates together. So if it's a change that we're suggesting that we're going to allow, we need to look at the rest of the language of these policies and see what sort of, how it all plays out. And again, guaranteeing, I, I would like, if space is available, you get the number one priority. But guaranteeing you a spot if we do not have space available puts us in a really tricky spot financially and, and otherwise. So the, the guarantee language, I love having them together as a first preference. It honors in J E C C the language around, "We really value BVSD students attending BVSD schools." And that policy also talks about space available. So if we're ignoring space available, we have to go back and revisit all of these policies. And we did make a commitment to our community that we will have these done, redlines approved at our next board meeting. And so overly complicating this, I, I just hope this board can get to some language that is clean, doesn't have a lot of tendrils, which is a priority, and gets us to a place where we have some, some consistent agreement. Kathleen, and then Dr. Anderson.
I do think it's really important that we're very clear that the open enrollment policy is about annual school enrollment. That waitlist language, the other language, the preferences, this is how all those seats get filled. And then the administrative transfer and placement policy applies to those mid-year moves for extenuating circumstances. That policy will come back to you. It was one of the related ones that was on that second slide. So we can clarify that in the admin transfer language as well as open enrollment, but, but this policy governs that annual school assignment that a kid is being assigned to, right? Because the first part of J E C C establishes your philosophy for school assignment and then the school choice process. So I don't, we shouldn't get too tripped up by that mid-year move because we don't have to fix that in J E C C or J E C C dash R. We just have to know for purposes of planning and staffing, as Dr. Anderson was indicating, which I think could be accomplished through that preference alignment, make them both preference one. I think the point of the open enrollment registration is so we know where kids are going to be and where the seats are open that we get to fill. It's less about, are you someplace in the lottery where you're not actually going to get that seat because you're lower? And more about, we need that notice consistent with our lottery process so that we know where the seats are open and where we can fill students in.
Yep, Kathleen, that's what I was going to clarify. I think that, you know, after the open enrollment window is, is, is closed, anything else is an admin transfer. Right? Like, so you start in August, you want to go back in, in September, that's an admin transfer consideration. If you, if you accept your, if you accept your seat back to your neighborhood school, right? And then you want to go back to your choice school, like, that would be an admin transfer. Right? Like, so, so it would be, it, it's just trying to create the right mechanics to say, if you went to a choice and you tried something out and it didn't fit, that you don't have to pick a neighborhood school that's not in your neighborhood, you can go back to your neighborhood school. Like, that's, that's how I'm hearing this being described. I apologize if I'm not being clear with the way that I'm trying to kind of get, get you all there, but it, it would be, and then you would do that by aligning that with the first preference. And to the extent that I said guaranteed, because you could run into the fact that that school would say, "We're not taking, accepting any open enrollment." So if you're first choice, then it doesn't matter. But if you were to force it early, right? If you were to force it early, then that would just, you would treat that as just kind of the, part of the, just the way that the, the way that enrollment breaks, right? You would treat it just like if somebody moved in, like, nobody moves into the community and say, "Nope, we're full." Like, we say you're full if you, if you want to come back, but if you, if you show up new, come on in. So... Is there a process for requesting a break?
He passed me a sticky note that says, "I would like a comfort break," and then I call one, but usually between topics. Beth, and then Robyn.
I, I echo Nicole's sentiments, I mean, pretty, pretty clearly, pretty similarly. I don't feel super comfortable with the word guaranteed admission, like, that feels too strong to me. However, I just keep, I'm literally just writing the word space available over here because to me, it feels like we need to have, you can come back to your home school if space is available, which is kind of how it already is, right? Like, you, we're not going to take you in if there's not literally a spot for you. So I, I feel, I would feel comfortable with combining the preferences, moving it up and adding a sentence that says something along the lines of, "If space is available." I think it kind of covers all the bases.
Jason, then Lelania, I think.
Yeah, I just, I just agree with Beth's comments. I think, you know, inherent in preferences is that it's, there's no guarantee, and so I'm uncomfortable with the word guarantee, uncomfortable with the word guarantee, but otherwise I agree with how Beth described it, Nicole as well, as far as how we move it up, as long as we don't guarantee anything.
It seems unnecessary to me to say if space is available because all of this is if space is available. So I, while I'm fine not saying guarantee, I also don't think we need to say if space is available because all of it's, do you understand what I'm saying? That's what we're doing. And given that I brought it up, maybe, maybe there's not that many people in front of this person trying to come back to their neighborhood school anyway, but I think it's about signaling that we want you.
Sorry, you turn on your mic, and I just want to make sure I follow up with that before I go to...
Sure, I could add just one small nuance, that the, the point about on time, in district first choice, on time, so that we do have our number, numbers of families wanting to return to their school of attendance in our initial roll-up, so that in January, before we do staffing, we have those numbers. But just to clarify, that our open enrollment process does continue and we do allow families to apply for late open enrollment. Families can apply for late open enrollment and be admitted if there is space available. And for that reason, we continue to monitor each school's waitlist very consistently all the way through the end of the lottery until September 1st, when the waitlist period closes. The administrative transfer period runs from September 15th through April 15th, just as a point of clarification.
Alex?
I guess, I guess I would bring this back to the declining enrollment issue. We're in a district where we're going to have to reduce services and we're going to have to close schools perhaps because we don't have enough students involved. So when a parent who's involved in a choice school is not having it work and they can't return to their neighborhood school, there's a very good chance they'll choice out of the district or into a private school. So I think, and I think putting them at the front of the line, but still not guaranteeing them the spot is pretty much the status quo because we're going to have, as we manage our choice, we're going to have fully subscribed schools as we're trying to spread them out. So I, and I feel strongly also to Nicole's point about those, subject to divorce or other things that make them leave, that we should give them the guarantee that we don't put in an open enrollment, we just say, "You are entitled to stay enrolled in our, any school that you're accepted to for all its grades." So it's not part of open enrollment. And similarly, say, outside of open enrollment, if you get noticed to us by January, you're entitled to re-enroll in your neighborhood school. This is not part of open enrollment, it's just signing up. And I think that's how we keep a few more hundred students in our school system over the next decade. On top of, I guess the reason it stuck in my craw when it was happening at Community Montessori, it was actually subjecting a student to a choice school that the family knew was not working for their child out of administrative convenience, because it was inconvenient to figure out late in the game how you would accommodate this child. So as long as we want more enrollment, let's keep them. And the, the people who are unhappy are probably the first, most likely people to leave our district. So one of the things we can do is say, "Hey, stay in the district, come back to your neighborhood school." And I, I'm pretty sure the numbers are small enough that they are, I'd love to know the data on how much mobility we have, how much in-year registration we have. And so we could say, "Hey, we're talking about 15 kids a year in a district that may has 400 kids move in throughout the year or move." So that's why, I'd really like to know what the status is. And if it's a small number and we have a lot of mobility, then, then I don't, it's not a problem for me to guarantee it, and it helps us do what's right for a kid educationally, even if it's inconvenient for us as adults.
Lelania, then Rob.
I just wondered if you could tell, you guys could tell us how you've seen this other places, how neighborhood schools work?
So a couple of things. The data you're asking for, I think, would be an incomplete set out only because that folks don't ask for it because they know they can't have it, right? Like, the, the data we could get is the folks that apply under preference four that don't get it. Like, we could pull that, right? I mean, that, that's what you're looking for, right? That, that a four preference with no guarantee unless space is available, how many kids over the past couple of years have actually applied through that preference and have then been denied? Like, we might be able to get that information. That's, that's the data point I would think we'd look at. The, the school choice law in Colorado is unlike any other place I've ever worked. Not bad or good, just very, very different, right? The idea that you pay taxes one place, you can send your kids to another place, like very, very, like, I've, in Florida and in, in Georgia, the choice is all district or charter. It's not any district school. So it's just different, it's more comprehensive. And then it really prevents balancing, you know, if we had declining enrollment in a, in a place like Atlanta, you'd just redraw the boundaries and you'd call it good. You'd balance your pop, your population. Problem we have is, you, you can do that, but then folks say, "Nah, I'm going to, I'm going to keep going where I'm going, but if not, then I'm going to go somewhere else." And if you keep doing it and keep messing with it, then I'm going to go to, and take another choice that's not BVSD at all. Like, and there's a balance that is, so, so I do think that it's complicated. You know, potentially, to move us forward, we could draft a couple of versions, right? One that keeps it as-is, one that moves it to a number one preference, and then another that moves it to guaranteed number one preference. Like, those are the three things I've heard, right? And then you could, you could, then you could vote it up or down as a board because I just feel like we're getting to a place. In the meantime, we'll look to try to get that data to, 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 on how many folks applied under that preference and were shut out of their home school, right? And we would have that before, we'd have that in the, I'm looking at Kathleen because I'm making all kinds of promises here and I got to make sure. So, so you could have the versions, you know, 1A, 1B, 1C, you could have the data and have it to the board before because maybe it's, no, this hasn't happened in five years, right? This is no longer an issue. And then you could all move forward because we, I mean, philosophically, we're a little bit blind in really the impact of what's happening. So I think I would suggest that moving forward. And then we, as long as everything else in the policy, this is the only point of contention, which is pretty good, we could do that, we could, and then you make a motion, second, discuss, amend, vote up, down, as long as on the 20th, we can get this thing across the line, perfect or imperfect, because that'll help us moving forward. That would be all that I'd ask.
I really like that suggestion, Rob, and it's a practice the board has used previously when there is some disagreement and clearly not a willingness to or ability to come to consensus. So I like that you'll provide, Kathleen will provide us a few drafts, we will come to the meeting prepared to make an upward vote on one or more of those. So I think that is a great way to move this conversation forward. Board members, any other comments on this policy before we take a small comfort break and come back for schools of choice? No? Okay, with that, I'd like to call a recess. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Our next and final policy to study this evening is board policy IFF, schools of choice. Kathleen, you can take it from here.
Thank you so much. So this last policy was, had not gotten a lot of attention, and the board had a lot of rich discussion about this last time. It sort of ran afoul of all of the policy principles that we started this discussion with, by being very redundant, incredibly detailed, and then did not finally have any sort of ultimate review process or ability to make sure that the school remained consistent with its original identity that was approved. So here's what we've done. We have dramatically shortened this policy. As Board President Raj Paul mentioned, we pulled out specific use of school names that were, it really, they were only tangentially connected at this point, anyway. So the red line does hopefully what we want policy to do, which is establishes the board's broad principles of supporting high-quality educational alternatives for all of our students, will provide relevance and framework for those current schools and the way that they're structured, and does provide for monitoring and review of focus status. I would say I put an asterisk there, because I do think that that language could be strengthened. Needs a few more sentences about actions that could be taken at that point. But those were the initial efforts with board policy IFF. The last thing I would note is that the last time we talked about this policy, the board had some questions about why it's coded as IFF. Why does it sit alone, for example, in the instructional policies, when our other choice references are either in J, which we just talked about with student assignment, or the board's final policy chapter is chapter L. It's about education and agency relations. It's where our charter school policies live. So I would put out there, I didn't propose a specific new code. I think we need to attach a new code to this policy and file it in the right place so that we can all find it when it's, and make sure that we keep it current and actually follow it with our schools.
Thanks for that, Kathleen. Kitty, since I can't see you right now, I just wanted to start with you, if you have any questions or comments on this policy.
Not right now.
Dr. Anderson.
I think the only thing that, and we can, is I have a sense that, that this may have to shift and change once we get the report around schools that have met that lesson around and a half, less than 50% capacity, because in that case, it may be the district driving focus programs. And this is more how do schools ask for those? And I do feel like that, that if we're going to try to use this as a strategy to increase enrollment, you have to consider things beyond a neighborhood, right? Because if you're trying to get kids from outside the neighborhood, then it might have to be more, so I don't know if it's, if I know exactly what that might look like today, but I do think that it's, you know, it's framed as like a bottom-up versus a top-down process, and maybe it's a two-way street. But there's definitely going to be another street, I think, that we're going to have to add here. So I don't know if we want to, but you know, we could pass a policy, and then amend a policy as we have, it kind of comes to light in regards to what that other process might look like. Or you could take out all of that stuff and just end it after the definitions, or the principles. You could just take the rest of it out. And then you could plop that onto a regulation that we could develop and sit alongside that, if that made sense.
Dr. Anderson, you brought up a point that was weighing on my mind. I was trying to think about how we can allow the district an opportunity to create choice, create focused schools and programs. And I agree, it might, where I was originally thinking was that that first line in the process, the principal, the district, or, like, I don't know. So including the district staff alongside the principal or representative of a group in there, as a way to kind of create some of that flexibility. But as I said last time, I would also be, you know, willing to take a larger knife to this policy and cut more of it out, because it's not entirely clear what we're trying to capture. So I just, because you brought that up, wanted to piggyback on that. I was also wondering how, without having to change this policy right away, we could add language to allow the district and their recommendations to be honored in this policy. Alex, then, Lelania.
I guess I'd start with, I think we should maintain, as you were starting, to have discretion to create things in order to attract and retain students. So I don't want to lose the clarity that we want to have those tools in our belt. And I also like the idea of responding to the community, so we keep the community in our schools by being responsive. I have a sort of first question, though, like, how does Boulder, Universal, New Vista, and Arapahoe Ridge fit into these? So we have, they're not focused schools, they're alternative schools, and, but we still have programmatically decided to have them. So that's, like, those are historical ones, like the superintendent's suggestion we consider, where the district created a thing, it is a school of choice, it's not a focused school, and it's not a neighborhood school. So I think if we're going to have a policy that reflects things people choose and gives us tools, then it should at least accommodate all the things we've already built.
Why would those not be focused schools? Like, maybe we haven't been calling them focused schools, but under the definition here of focused school or focused school program, I mean, New Vista has a focus for sure, we were there today. Arapahoe Ridge has a focus for sure. But if we had, we have some that we've, sorry, but we've had some that we've called focused schools, and part of the issue is like, how do we evaluate them? Would we make that go away? And I don't know what our stance would be if we declared tomorrow that New Vista now has a three-year review cycle or something, since it's been there for so long.
Yeah, I'll have to think about, you know, there's certain things that I think that, I think, yeah. Because what you're saying is that if you're a focused school, then you're subject to review to make sure you're meeting whatever it is that you've stated you've met. And then you have long-established programs that just are, and aren't, this just are, right? You have an alternative high school, right, that allows kids to accelerate credits. You have New Vista that has a very different approach, that's a more of an, it's not an alternative center, it is a high school with an alternative approach. And then, you know, the question would be then, some schools, you would just rate them like you would look at all other schools, and then focus programs or choices, you might have different outcomes or objectives, whether you do a language, Montessori, right, those types of things. And so I don't know, I don't know if a clean answer for that. I would say that, you know, we could, we could consider, like, what that might mean. It's hard to, yeah, you know, it's, it's, because that almost goes a step beyond of what we're saying here in the policy, because you're talking about review. The policy doesn't state that, but what I hear you say is that there's a set of schools that don't really, we haven't, we've never called New Vista a focused school, right? And so it may just be a, it's like that, well... I think I have good answers. I nephew, Alex. I mean, because it's like a magnet program, it's like a magnet school. But then how is that really different than Community Montessori or High Peaks or BCSIS? It's not really not, we just haven't called it that. So do you have a solution?
I think that the discussion we had last month was about giving the community clarity about what's what, so that they could exercise choice, and we could promote it, give them information. And my point is just that we, our language has developed in a way, and we're sort of streamlining this policy now for a set of the words, but that, those words don't yet accommodate all our schools, in a system of choice where we need to accommodate them all. That's all. I don't know what to do about it.
It makes two of us. All right. I feel as lonely.
I think you could offer changing, like, making clarity, provide clarity on the website when we list all of our schools. That was part of the reason why I moved the names of schools out of our other policy, because we did not encompass, you have to open a roll into New Vista, but it was never listed. So I think we can use our promotional tools for our parents to really be clear about what schools fall under what buckets. And I do think this, this definition around different philosophies and themes provides some clarity. So because you were asking for suggestions, I decided to jump in ahead of my line of Lelania and then Jorge. So apologies there.
Yeah, I think, my first comment was that the nomenclature is closer, but if we're going to consider New Vista a focused school, then number five in our process is it grandfathered in and we're not looking at it every three years? So I think that's confusing. And, but I really, really like your suggestion, Rob, of having this policy be our principles, which does encompass all of our schools, no matter what we name them. Maybe we still have to work on nomenclature, I don't know. But the policy seems to encompass what we believe. And then if you could take proposal and process and put that in a regulation, then we could keep working on that and get this done by the 27th. I think it's, I think that makes the most sense, if we could just get that nomenclature. Maybe we all come to accept that everything that's not a neighborhood school is a focused school.
Jorge.
I think Nicole and Lelania have now addressed the points I wanted to make. The idea was to kind of capture with the new labels, right, every school, and that we have to apply that and advertise that so that it's really clear and consistent. And I like the idea of removing the process and procedures and proposal from this, just here's our definitions, here's our priorities, and where we want to go with it, and that's our policy.
Kitty, I'm looping back to you. Anything?
Yes. Sorry, I had problems reaching my mouse. What if we just called them all choice schools? And not differentiate between whether it's alternative or focus or something else? Would that work? Or are there some categories that need to be labeled a certain way because of funding or something?
We could. You know, I guess the question that we have to ask is how much specificity do we want? If you wanted to put them in a category, they are choice schools, right? But do you differentiate between choice schools a little bit differently? Only because you have whole school choice schools, and then you have focus programs in schools that also have a neighborhood, neighborhood school component, and a strand that should be specialized and different, but sometimes isn't.
Well, could we say choice schools, programs, and strands?
I think I just need a little bit of time to kind of think about that. I'll bring back some options to the board. And I do think, and I do agree, Lelania, I think your suggestion was right, that we throw this in a regulation, get IFF right, so we can land it on the 27th, and we can move forward with our conversations based on the L-RAC presentation.
Yeah, I just have one note, because I know we'll be pressed on it. But I really do think as we consider what our options are with declining enrollment and how to retain and recruit parents, that we explore the strand concept more. Because I think, like, if we ever are closing schools, people will propose charters the next week. And they're gonna not be very viable, and it will be really fractious for our community. But if people have an idea that they think would attract parents and keep them in our school system, if we can find the space for that to happen, we may be able to keep or attract some more students. So I do like the, I don't, the strand is like, I think we could call the rest choice schools, but like, when you hear the strands described, they don't sound very coherent.
Could you please explain a strand versus a focus?
Dr. Anderson?
Now, I can explain it. In prac, in practice, it could be different, depending upon, we, you know, again, we're just, we're, we're putting folk, we're putting attention on, on something that, that we have not as paid as much attention to. But a strand would be, you would have an element in a neighborhood school that would give a specialized experience, right? Sometimes, the way I envision it, a strand can be like a school within a school. Maybe that's a more kind of popular concept, where you have a team of teachers that does something specialized, and then you have the rest of the school that operates like a neighborhood school. And then the strand of kids, right, the cohort of kids integrates with the neighborhood school. So lunch, electives, so on and so forth. But the academic experience would be specialized and different. Well, BCSIS is, everybody in BCSIS is getting the BCSIS experience, right? But if you say, say you said, oh, we want to expand BCSIS to ABC Elementary, right? And then what you would do is you had ABC Elementary, they're running, and then you'd have a team of teachers that would give you a BCSIS academic experience. And then your electives and all those other things, they would be with all the kids. Like, all the fourth-grade kids would go to recess, like, they wouldn't go to a separate recess. All the fourth-grade kids would go to lunch, right? So think about it as a team of teachers, right, that have a focused academic experience, right, that might be different than, you know, the typical curriculum and standards that are being taught in neighborhood schools. So that would be what it is. Now, what, the way that it's been implemented, from what I understand, is that they, we have some focus programs where they just got additional resources that spread across the whole school. So folks who choose and folks in the neighborhood get very similar experiences, but it's a, it's a minimally enhanced experience, right? So like, I'm thinking about, like, if we had, you know, I think in one of our schools, we have some extra gifted and talented resources, right? So it's not a strand per se. It's not all that different from neighborhood schools, but it's a little different in a certain area. But if, if what, if what Alex is talking about, it would be more of a school within a school model. And if we have schools that are under two rounds, right, if you have a school that's a round and a half, right, and you need a half-round, right, you could fill up, you could take a half-round from the kids that are there, add another half-round, then you have a two-round school. And the half-round that are there, plus the other half-round that you would add to make one whole round, would be something different and exciting that folks would be interested in, right? And that would be more on an application type of a basis. So you, but then you, there'd be integration at these points, like electives, recess, lunch, extracurricular stuff. Does that make sense?
So I see Robin making her way up, and I think she has a, is it that slide you were gonna show that has articulated this in the past to the board?
Right. So yes, well done, Dr. Anderson. You're right. So this, this is a slide that we have used with our long-range advisory committee to help explain it. However, I do see one little tweak that we need to make. So specifically, the concept of a strand is, is a subset. So some schools within a neighborhood school experience slightly different or, or significantly different programming, as per the description from Dr. Anderson. So for example, STEAM, well, so here's a better example. Dual Language at Columbine. Not all of the students enrolled at Columbine Elementary participate in the dual-language program. But some choose to attend that school specifically for the dual-language program. Another example would be the Arts Focus at Manhattan. So you can choose to take all of your electives in visual arts or in musical arts or in theater arts, for example, and they are expanded, but that's not every student. The, the tweak that I do see here is Whittier IB, which is actually a, it's a focus, but every student in that, in that school participates in that focus. At high school...
But they all don't choose that school, right? So it's neighborhood school, and other folks opt in, but they all get the same thing.
Exactly.
And I think that's the trick. Like, a pure focus school is everybody chooses it, right, and doesn't have, it doesn't have a, an attendance boundary, right? This strand is you have an attendance boundary and folks choose it. Is that maybe a better way to articulate?
Yes, that is correct. So our, our pure focus schools are 100% open enrollment. They do not have a neighborhood attendance or catchment area.
Thank you, Robin. Board members?
So I have a couple of questions, comments on this policy. I'm thrilled that we've cut the length down a lot. I also like how we have really listed the principles that have an equity lens and are really taking into considerations the impacts of focus schools and programs, the impacts that they might have on neighboring schools during declining enrollment. I'm glad that we're gonna move the chapter of this policy because it's a hard one to find where it lives today. And maybe somewhat controversial, I actually think as we consider how we are naming schools and try to create a greater degree of consistency, and as we continue to think about leveraging choice and programs to improve enrollment, I actually think our non-neighborhood schools that have existed for a long time should be reviewed to make sure that they are providing the philosophy that, that they, that they say that they are providing in a way that is pretty consistent. We, we review our charter schools on a regular basis. You know, we, we review our academic philosophy and priorities for all of our neighborhood schools. We have standards for those. So I don't think it's a bad idea, particularly early on, and then with some regular cadence, much like we're looking at our attendance zones with a regular cadence, to say, like, are you offering the program that you're saying you are to fidelity? Is it still relevant to our community? Are they actually choosing it for that program or because of other reasons? Like, maybe you just happen to be high-achieving, but nobody really cares for the program itself? That may or may not be carried out to fidelity. So I don't think, I don't think that there's a reason why we shouldn't evaluate existing programs if we are existing, gonna evaluate new programs, and if we already evaluate our charters with their renewal. So I will throw out there, I, you know, I think whatever we put into a regulation should have language around, that's stronger around a process for review and include all of our schools that are not neighborhood schools. And then those strands, too, are they, are they providing? Are students seeking those focuses and having some more information as we are navigating this changing landscape? So those were the couple of points I wanted to make. Alex?
I think that's a great idea. And I would add, I would want in the policy probably to, to have it be about information. And so there's a chance to have feedback, it might be change. But really, also, even if it's going great, we can just better describe it to the community and say, this, this is pretty intense, the way they do this, or this is a slight, you know, flavor of what they do. And then parents can make more informed choices. And then, and a board can make more informed choices about what to do. I like the idea.
Oh, Kitty, sorry.
So for our schools like New Vista, or, well, I guess, everything, are they, aren't they evaluated by the state based on test scores the same way neighborhood schools are?
I'll accept Arapahoe Ridge, which is an alternative education center. They have a different kind of analysis.
Right.
But, but yes.
So I'm just thinking about how we would treat a school like New Vista differently from how we treat our traditional comprehensive high schools. I mean, I do like the idea with new programs, that we evaluate them to make sure they're doing what they said they would do. But I think of longstanding programs, and I feel a little differently about it.
I think New Vista would welcome the opportunity to show off the things that they do. Because I do think that they have a very clear, different model with advisory, with student opportunities. They have these huge presentation days at the end of each semester's alternative assessment of all of our schools. I think that they would probably score the highest on their original 30 years ago vision that they talked about today at the, at the topping-off ceremony. I think where it gets fuzzy is when you had schools, I'm thinking particularly in the, in the Lafayette area, where the, it was called a de-stratification plan, where they were adding something a little special to the neighborhood schools so folks wouldn't leave the neighborhood schools, right? There was this fear of, I don't understand, white flight, folks moving away from schools in Lafayette. And so we called those, you know, your focus strand schools, that's a lot of them that were part of that plan. The problem they were trying to solve is, so we keep the kids in these neighborhoods, we're gonna give all these schools a little bit something special, and then all the kids in Lafayette can pick one of these schools, but Lafayette kids are gonna stay in these Lafayette schools, right? And so those, that little something special, like, the problem they were trying to solve, they did. The kids stayed, right? Those programs weren't necessarily to attract kids from out, like, we just have, it was a different time, you know, and, and it worked, right? But for today, right, the evaluation might be, you know, what's the next iteration of that, or where are we at?
Yeah, and I think just to piggyback, evaluation doesn't have to be punitive, but it's just to really get an understanding of the state of, of programming in our schools. And it can be celebratory, depending on what schools are providing. And even having some clarity around that, I think, is a good opportunity for messaging and communications to our, to our students. Any other thoughts on this policy, board members? Kathleen, you have the direction you need?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, board members. Next item on our agenda, our future agenda requests. Board members, as you know, this is the time in our meeting where we bring up items we'd like to include in our next prior, board prioritization meeting, which I did want to share, if not everybody knew, that that has been moved up to May to accommodate potentially some new work earlier rather than later. We, where we heard a lot unclear that folks wanted the opportunity to add new items, so we did make that change to it, to move that to an earlier date. So that will be happening in May. And then, given that, are there items that board members haven't previously brought up that would like to add to that running list of potential board priorities to discuss in May? Kitty?
Excuse me. I would like to revisit our cellphone policy.
Okay. Other board members? It's okay if there aren't, and there's a long list we've generated already. Alex?
I know we've had discussions about this, so I'm not sure whether it needs to be a new priority for a separate meeting or work session. But I am really interested in furthering the idea of evaluating and assessing our mental health and social-emotional learning stuff, and how partnerships can, stuff can help. And I know stuff's in, in the work, so it may be that that'll fit right in the plan. But that's still a priority for me to get back to.
Anything else, board members, before we, Alex?
On behalf of my colleagues on the board who have small children and jobs, I'd like us to reconsider our start time. And I know that on Tuesday nights, at least a couple of them have problems getting here on time, and it's a, it's a hassle and can be distracting. So I'm not, I'd like to propose that we consider a 5 o'clock instead of a 4:30 start for everything. I don't know if that's an agenda item or just something for us to consider otherwise.
You mean, starting dinner at 5? Because our meetings don't start until 5. So starting, okay. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, last, last go-around for final additions to that list. And is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Moved by Alex. Seconded by everybody. Okay, meeting is adjourned.